Welcome, everybody, to the August 28th Spokane City Council Meeting Legislative Session. Please rise through the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Farnsworth, do you want to do roll call?
Yes. Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. And we have very special guests today. Leona Ziegler is going to read a poem called "Peaceful Valley." You want to come up to the microphone? Speak right into the microphone and in your classroom voice like you're a teacher.
Hi, I'm Leona Ziegler, and this poem is called "Peaceful Valley." It was quiet that day in Peaceful Valley, home to the Ziegelschmidt family and what we call the Beatrice. We were thinking about guests, we were doing yoga, we were writing poems. Writing poems we did daily, but yoga not too much. I was calm. Now that, my friend, is focus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay right there. Stay right there. All right, good job. That's going to be a hard act to follow. So we're going to do some salutations now. The first one is our firefighter salutation, and I believe Randy Marler and Brian Schaefer and some other folks are here to receive that. Want to go ahead?
Saluting Spokane Fire Service Members. Whereas today and every day, Spokane's Fire Service Members remain on alert and on call and are always there for the citizens of Spokane, every hour of the day, every day of the year. And whereas, at a moment's notice, Fire Service Members are quick to respond to uncertain situations, to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic well-being of our community. And whereas, the Spokane City Council wishes to express gratitude and honor these heroes and their community partners that have done an excellent and critical job in keeping these fires at bay, extinguishing them very quickly, saving countless structures, livestock, and the lives of our residents here in Spokane. And whereas, there are many brush fires this season worsened by drought-like conditions in our area and high temperatures, making the backbreaking work that involves a lot of digging and trenching under very trying conditions, all the more challenging in sometimes rough and rocky terrain. And whereas, following an already difficult fire season, Spokane firefighters were faced with the unimaginable forest fires that devastated Spokane. And whereas, daily Spokane firefighters show their dedication, commitment, and sacrifice. But when faced with emergencies like the wildfires, they answer the call and respond without hesitation, knowingly accepting both personal and physical tolls while risking their safety to protect the lives of others. Now therefore, I, Lori Kinnear, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, hereby salute Spokane Fire Service Members for their contributions to protecting our wildland urban interface. A grateful city thanks them for their brave work. Every year, these fires present a challenge both in fighting destructive fires and keeping our air clean and managing our precious forests. I, Lori Kinnear, Spokane City Council President, do hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Spokane to be affixed this 28th day of August 2023.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Do we have, are there any other firefighters that are in the audience? Would they please stand?
Would you please come up? Or stand? Chief and Mr. Marler, after you get your photo taken, you can say a few words if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, City Council, for this honor.
Just move that up a little bit. You're a little bit taller than the last.
I don't usually have that problem, I'm sorry. Thank you, City Council, for this honor. It's with genuine gratitude that I accept the salutation on behalf of the members of IFF Local 29. This recognition is a testament of the collaborative efforts of our members to serve our community. We've worked tirelessly to enhance the residents' quality of life and safety. Let us all continue to foster inclusivity, sustainable growth, and open dialogue. This is a reminder that progress thrives in unity. With dedication, passion, and shared vision, we will ensure a bright future for all who call Spokane home. Thank you again.
And also, a big thank you for recognizing the organization. Obviously, we have a very diverse organization that's made up of people that are in MNP and 270, and also that are not represented. We're part of a larger system that supports this entire region, all the way from the Okanagan down to the Tri-Cities and essentially up to Canada. We have a really big responsibility being the largest city here in eastern Washington. Your support is always appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stratton, you are next with your salutation. I don't know, is Janelle or somebody from Don Higgins' family here? If not, we will mail the salutation. Go ahead.
Do you want me to still read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Saluting Don Higgins for his service to the city of Spokane. Whereas, Don Higgins was a pillar of the community and served as an advocate and West Central Neighborhood leader. And whereas, Don exemplified the rare skill of having the ability to ignore sensationalism and focus on the fundamental pieces that allow a community to grow and thrive. And whereas, Don's ability to listen for root cause problems and recognition of the lost sense of community were foundational to the development of many community-based strategies that revitalized the West Central Neighborhood and set a path forward for other neighborhoods that emulated his work. And whereas, Don founded the West Central Community Center and worked as the director for 31 years, later privatizing the center and creating a nonprofit organization, and then expanded the center in 2005. And whereas, Don was instrumental in the creation of many community initiatives, including community-oriented policing, neighborhood councils, Coats for Kids, city code enforcement, Northwest Alliance and media responsibility, housing affordability, Horizons Board, Citizens League, and the city's Office of Neighborhoods. And whereas, Don led the way as a true servant, lifting others into leadership roles, all while changing and improving the dynamic of individuals, families, and the entire West Central community. Whereas, it has been speculated that one of Don's favorite words to use was synergy, which is defined as two or more organizations working cooperatively to produce a combined effort greater than the sum of their separate effects. And Don mastered this skill throughout his extraordinary service to the community. And whereas, Don Higgins, born in Spokane and a lifetime resident, passed away on August 5th, 2023. Now therefore, I, Lori Kinnear, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, hereby salute Don Higgins for his contributions to not only the West Central Neighborhood, but to all the neighborhoods in Spokane that benefited from his foresight and commitment to public service.
Thank you. Okay, next is the salutation for Spokane Police Officers, and I just want to reiterate what Chief Schaefer said. We're honoring all of our emergency responders because we've had a horrific year of wildfires, and it's not over yet. So our wildfire season grows longer and longer each year, and their severity is increasing. So we really do appreciate every single person that's out there trying to help, whether they're civilian or part of an organization like the SPD or our firefighters. So whereas, the city of Spokane Police Department plays, you guys, why don't you come down? Come on down, all of you. Whereas, the city of Spokane Police Department plays an important role in safeguarding our city and is dedicated to collaboratively serving the city of Spokane, providing a professional service that allows citizens to enjoy a high quality of life in a safe environment. And whereas, we acknowledge and appreciate the brave officers that protect our community, showing their dedication by putting their lives on the line to save others, protect property that uphold the law. And whereas, unexpected challenges frequently occur during a dangerous fire season, and officers must remain on call and committed to public safety, and this is evidence based on the immediate and cooperative response of the Spokane Police Department to recent wildfires in Spokane and the perimeters. Whereas, police officers responded to several major wildfire incidents around the county, providing endless hours of aid to neighboring departments, supporting necessary traffic diversion because fire had encroached onto the major interstate, and assisting in the evacuation of thousands of people. And whereas, these police officers and other department employees prioritize the protection of fire victims while ensuring that thousands of people were evacuated safely. Now therefore, I, Lori Kinnear, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, hereby salute the city of Spokane Police Department for bravery, swift action, to prioritize the safety of our citizens. So please, say a few words.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think our officers have a new appreciation for what our firefighters go through. We had, at the peak of this incident in Medical Lake, we had over 50 Spokane Police Officers out there assisting with evacuations, road closures, trying to direct traffic as well. This fire was so destructive and moving so fast that the officers who were trying to evacuate ahead of it were at risk of being engulfed by the flames. And the stories I have heard from the officers that were there, one story is officers knocked on the door and told the gentleman inside, "You have two minutes to get out of here," and he barely made it out in two minutes. Vehicles trying to leave from the fire area literally had to look at the front bumper in front of them as this snake of cars was leaving the area. The smoke was so thick and so dense, sparks bouncing off the hood of the vehicles. It looked like, from what I'm told, it looked like absolute Armageddon. And our officers were out there, they worked long shifts, they came in on their weekends as well to come out, and they stayed until they were able to evacuate the whole area. It was very scary. We had patrol cars, law enforcement cars, where the paint had bubbled on it. I know one deputy was stranded on a dock as well because the fires had moved so fast and they were so destructive. And stories of our officers giving updates to the command post because this thing was just growing so fast, the embers would start fires in different areas as well. So I thank you for recognizing, recognizing the Spokane Police Officers that were there. It was really a team effort, and I would say this community should definitely be very, very proud of them. They did an amazing job that day as well. So thank you.
Next, we have a community update with AWC Deanna Dawson. Is she here? Oh, Deanna, thank you. Come on up. And she is the CEO of Association of Washington Cities. So Councilmember Wilkerson, you must know Deanna quite well. You're the president this year.
She works me hard.
So welcome, and tell us what's going on.
Thank you so much, Council President Kinnear and members of the city council. I'm really honored to be here tonight. As you alluded to, Council President, we have two, actually, board members from Spokane City Council right now, serving on the AWC board. Councilmember Wilkerson is our board president. She was elected by her peers from across the state to serve in that role this year. And Councilmember Zepone also serves on our board, and he's actually serving on our executive committee this year. So that's one of the things I wanted to come and talk to you all about, is that you have sort of a unique opportunity this year with the leadership that you have from your city council, serving on the board of the Association of Washington Cities. So I'm honored to be here also because this is my hometown. I was born and raised here in Spokane, and I've given presentations at, you know, hundreds of council meetings over the years, but this is the first time I've been here in Spokane. I've been with AWC for just about a year now, and so it's exciting to be here. My father was a big Spokane City Council watcher. He liked to watch the meetings on TV and would talk back to the TV and get really fired up. He passed away some time ago, but that was one of his favorite hobbies, was watching your council meetings. So I know he's watching me somewhere and enjoying himself right now. So about the Association of Washington Cities, I think you all know who we are, but for the public watching this, there are actually, in 49 of our 50 states, there are associations like AWC. Hawaii is the only one that does not have one because there's only one city in Hawaii. But other states have associations like AWC, but I like to think that we're one of the best, if not the best, of our state leagues in the country, where we have a really engaged membership. And unlike some parts of the country, all 281 cities in the state of Washington are voluntary members of the association. So I think that really says something about Washington State and how we come together and work together as a group, east and west, large and small. And that's really what we're all about at the Association of Washington Cities, is building those bridges between communities and finding that common ground so that we can work together for the common interests of all our residents in the state of Washington who live in our cities and towns. And we're celebrating 90 years of that, building bridges this year in 2023. So we actually have four separate but related corporations under the umbrella of the Association of Washington Cities. We have an Employees Benefit Trust. We provide health insurance to many of the cities in the state of Washington. We have a Risk Management Service Agency and provide insurance of other sorts to cities. And we also have a 501(c)(3) arm, but I'm going to primarily focus on our C4 arm, where our mission is to serve our members through advocacy, education, and services at the Association of Washington Cities. We have board districts all across the state, and we elect our board members from there. And Spokane has a designated seat on our board as the second-largest city in the state of Washington. And in addition this year, as I said, we have sort of an unusual circumstance because the membership-elected Councilmember Wilkerson as president, so now we have two members because Councilmember Zepone represents District 9, which is Spokane's seat, as well as Councilmember Wilkerson serving as our president. And in addition to that, we have sort of an unusual circumstance because the whole region is really well-represented on our board right now. So we have 25 members on our board, and they set strategic goals for the organization, oversee the organization, including setting our legislative priorities. We have an executive committee made up of six members, and Spokane is in really good shape this year because two of those six members, very unusually, are from the city of Spokane. So you're in a really good position to set policy and to really drive this organization in this current year. And to help us with our strategic goals in terms of leadership, promoting the role of cities and towns in the state of Washington, educating our members, our elected officials, as well as staff throughout the state, championing innovation in our cities, providing leadership on inclusiveness, and also delivering our organizational effectiveness. So there's an old saying that we like to say, "If you're not at the table, you might be on the menu." But this year, Spokane is not just at the table, you're really kind of at the head of the table. And you're setting that table because AWC gives cities a seat at that table. But again, you have really strong leadership this year. In addition to Councilmember Wilkerson serving as our president and Councilmembers Zepone serving on the board, we also have other Spokane-area leaders on the board. District 1, which surrounds District 9, the city of Spokane, Spokane County and other surrounding counties, Mickey Harnoy, a council member from Rockford, serves on our board, as well as Councilmember Ben Wick of Spokane Valley, serves as the Western Member at Large. So this is a really unusual year where you have this kind of leadership from the Spokane region and a really good opportunity for Spokane region to be able to have its voice heard throughout the state. As I mentioned a moment ago, we're celebrating 90 years of AWC. This is our new magazine that's coming out in just a couple of weeks here to celebrate that 90 years. And one of the things I wanted to highlight that comes out in this magazine is a really great interview and a story that I think is interesting beyond the leadership that you have here at AWC, is that the head of the county's organization is also from Spokane. And so it's a really unusual time where we have, Mary Cuny is the chair of WASAC, the State Counties Association, Councilmember Wilkerson, chair of this organization, and we really work in partnership. And it's such an interesting story. I really hope when the magazine comes out, you'll all take a look at it and read it because it's this interesting story of partnership between two leaders and people working to get things done together at the county level, at the city level, setting aside any sort of partisan differences to get things done, which is really what we're all about at AWC, is trying to work together to get things done, cooperative governing. In addition to our Board of Directors, we have legislative steering committees, we have large city advisory committees, we have education and training committees. I just really want to make you all aware of all these different opportunities for service and for getting involved in the association and to make your voices heard. Councilmember Wilkerson serves as the chair of our Legislative Steering Committee currently as the board president, and we just, there's lots of ways that you can get involved and make sure that Spokane's voice is heard at the table. So as I mentioned, our mission is to serve our members through advocacy, education, and services. Most people know us because of our advocacy. We have a very strong presence, one of the strongest lobbying teams, I think, in the state, working on behalf of our member cities. And our advocacy is guided by these core principles around local decision-making, making sure that cities have a strong voice at the table, making sure we have strong partnerships with other entities throughout the state, making sure that we have enough fiscal resources for our cities to be able to do the jobs they need to do, leading on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and this nonpartisan analysis and decision-making that we're really proud of in our association. This year, we will be updating our core principles, and so I encourage you all to get involved in that process as well. We'll have a group that we'll be putting together, a proposal for our entire membership to vote on, and so we'd love to have someone from Spokane engaged on that committee this year when we update those things. But these core principles drive our legislative advocacy. And we have federal priorities, we have state priorities. I won't get too much into what our 2023 priorities were because our session is over now, but I will let you know that we do have our process going on right now. In September, our Legislative Priorities Committee will adopt their legislative agenda for the year, so now is a really good time to engage on that and to let Councilmembers Zepone and Wilkerson know what your interests are as a city and to make sure that the priorities that we adopted at AWC reflect your community's priorities. September 12th is when the Legislative Priorities Committee will make their recommendations, and then it will go to our full board for action on September 20th. So now is a great time to be taking a look at those and giving us direction on those. So the second aspect of our leadership at AWC is really around education and training, and we have a whole variety of ways that you can do that training and to make sure that you, as elected leaders, are really up to speed on the laws on the state of Washington and that you're learning from your peers as well as from experts from around the state. We have large conferences, including our annual conference, which we just held in June in Spokane. Thank you for hosting that conference. We had about 500 elected officials from around the state here in Spokane to do that. We also do many other conferences throughout the years. We do mayor's exchanges, where mayors come together from around the state to learn from each other. We have a Certificate of Municipal Leadership Program, which I'll talk about. We have a host of online opportunities to do your training, and we also do an event called Elected Officials Essentials, which I wanted to talk about a little bit tonight. That will be held on December 9th. It's a great opportunity for newly-elected officials, as well as for more seasoned officials, to come together and really understand all of your legal requirements, as well as other types of training. It serves as the mandatory training that council members do need to do as elected officials in the state of Washington around your Open Public Meetings Act requirements and that type of thing as well. I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of the fact that we have what's called the Certificate of Municipal Leadership Program at AWC. Councilmember Wilkerson, I know, has her CML, and I know that Councilmember Zepone is working on his. Would really encourage all of you to get, are you there, Zach? You got your credits now? I think you got your credits at the conference. I think you're there. So awesome. So really encourage everyone to get that certificate, just to demonstrate that you've got that expertise and that you've done that training. So many professions do require this. I'm an attorney by training, you know, we have to do our training to stay up with the bar association. And similarly, at Association of Washington Cities, we have a certification program for people to be able to demonstrate that they've got that expertise in municipal leadership. You need to get 30 credits in a variety of competency areas to be able to get that CML, and then we also have an advanced level for that. And these are the areas where we have training. We have training around roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements for city officials, around public sector resource management, so budgeting and finance, that type of thing, around community planning and development, so land use issues, around effective local leadership, and then around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. So really encourage you all to check those things out. You can do them online as well as in person. We have, do a lot of training. Last year, we had over 1,200 people attend our in-person trainings, and we had over 1,000 elected officials do our online training. So there's about 2,000 elected officials total in cities across the state, so most of those folks are doing that training. And we had about 344 people attend the conference in 2022. We had a lot more than that this year in 2023, which was great. And we're going to blow this 30 certificates awarded last year and 19 advanced certificates out of the water this year. We're already about double that for 2023. So lots of your peers across the state are taking advantage of that training and encourage all of you to do that as well. Again, thank you all for hosting this great event that we had in June here in Spokane. I'm always really proud to show off Spokane to our elected officials throughout the state, since it is my hometown. I always like to show everyone the Garbage Goat. That's my favorite. My father helped make the Garbage Goat back in the 70s, so that's one of my favorite parts of Spokane. But I really also want to thank Councilmember Zepone because he really dove in this year to help us with the planning. He was, I've never seen anybody who was so excited about showing off their city. He's like, "We have to do this mobile tour. We have to do that mobile tour." And then he went along on all the mobile tours to show people what was going on in the city. And people were really enthusiastic because they saw his enthusiasm and love for his community, and I thought it was really fun. And he also helped us plan some receptions and found some good places for us to do things. He's just, he likes to show off his city, and it was great to see. So thank you, Zach. Another thing that you may or may not be aware of with AWC is that we have a ton of data and publications that are available to all of you, and I know your staff team uses these things. We do a salary and benefits survey, so if you're not sure what your employees should be paid, this is a great resource. We do surveys around taxes and fees, so you can see what your other communities across the state are doing in way of those types of things. We do surveys around what's happening in other city conditions. We have transportation resources. We have mayor and council member handbooks, housing reports. We have mayor and councilmember handbooks, housing reports, reports around equity, reports around homelessness, and so on. And so pretty much anything that you need information on, we are your source of information on that. And if we don't already have a report on it, please call us up because we have got a lot of expertise on our staff and we're happy to help connect you to experts in the field or find other peers throughout the state who are working on the same issues. Because I think that's one of the things we all recognize is that whatever you're working on, your peers in other parts of the state are working on as well. And there's no need for us to all reinvent the wheel. Every time some issue comes up, we can learn from each other. So we're there as a resource for you. Please feel free to call me or my team at any time if you have questions about best practices throughout the state. One thing I wanted to point out to you this year, some new work that we're doing in the past year is around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Zepone both serve on our new Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Cabinet, which is working to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our cities around training in this area, but also making sure that our organization is welcoming and inclusive and perceived as such by all our members, including cities large and small, urban and rural. We're working, we've got people from all over the state on this cabinet, including very small, very rural communities, very large cities throughout the state. And so it's a really great place for our members to come together and learn from each other and to give us feedback on what folks need. We've also been hosting forums on a regular basis every other month for people to come and have open dialogue on topics around equity. And we're also hosting forums for staff to come together and work together and make sure they're sharing best practices. And I know your city participates in those in various ways. So that's just something I'm kind of excited about that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. So as I mentioned, we're really all about building bridges, building bridges between cities across the state, building bridges across policy arenas, cities small and large, to the left and to the right, big and small. And we're really looking about providing the training and resources to our cities so they can bridge divides within their own communities as well, because it's such an important part of what we do. And as local elected officials, as city officials that are nonpartisan, we have a unique role that we can play in bridging some of those partisan divides that we know are all too present right now in our society. That's another thing that we're doing quite a lot of work around right now at AWC is helping people figure out the ways that they can bridge those divides in their own communities because I know it's really hard. We're doing some work with the Lieutenant Governor's Office and with the Ruckles House Center and other entities around civic engagement and civic health. We're hosting a forum coming up in a couple of weeks here in October with the Lieutenant Governor around civic health that I would invite all of you as council members to come to on October 9th. It will be held unfortunately on the west side of the state, but in Renton. But I would love to have you all there if you'd like to be there to talk about how we can encourage more civic health in our communities and help people come together as communities. So being an active AWC member, as I mentioned, there's so many different ways that you all can get involved with AWC. You have two of the more involved council members in the state and certainly as our Board President, Councilmember Wilkerson is so involved with us. But there's lots of opportunities for the rest of you if you'd like to get engaged with us. I'd also encourage you to stay involved by, you know, reading the emails that we send out to you. I know there are a lot. We have a lot of newsletters that come out with great information. We have our City Vision Magazine, which we do primarily digitally now, but it'll be a hard copy. And again, take a look at that article about Councilwoman Wilkerson and Councilmember Cuny in this month's episode coming out. Check out some of our online training, attend some of our in-person events. There's lots of different ways you can be involved. So again, mark your calendars for this Elected Officials Essentials. I know you're going to be appointing a new council member tonight. I hope that you will encourage that person to come to this Elected Officials Essentials training. We will be held in in-person locations all around the state. We're looking about eight locations around the state as well as virtually. And I think we're going to be doing one in maybe Fairfield, I think, offered to host one. So Spokane could also host one if you wanted to, just saying. If you would like to step up, we could still work with you on hosting an in-person version of that. But it's a great way to both meet new elected officials and to engage with your peers around the state, but also to learn what you need to know as a new elected. And so I'd also especially encourage folks who are elected in, you know, 2019 or 2021 because you didn't get a lot of that in-person experience right away, to also come in person and attend that session on December 9th. So I just want to end with asking all of you, how can we best support your community? We're here for you. You can always give me a call, but I am also want to offer our staff team to at your, we're at your beck and call, basically. And again, you have these great members on your council who you can also ask for help and they've got a way to do it because, you know, they're effectively my boss and as my board members. And so I'm very fortunate to have them on our board right now. So with that, any questions or any feedback you might have for us?
Questions? Go ahead.
I will just truly comment, the continuing education has been invaluable to me. I came on in COVID, walked into an empty building, basically didn't know what was what or where the coffee machine was. And a lot of the jargon that's used in city government, didn't have a clue. And able to do that online and to get a basic understanding of government was very foundational for me. And all the other training that's online, I would encourage any elected to go and check it out. But the resources, the homeless report that we did, all council members should probably read that as we look at where we're going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate your saying that. And I think, you know, I would encourage you all to do the online training, but I'd also say, come to our conferences and get to know people because truly those relationships that you build with your fellow elected officials, one, they will get you through when it's, you're going through hard times, but they will also be, give you that peer support in terms of helping you figure out best practices around the state. But I will say, so I'm a recovering elected official myself. I served two terms on the Edmund City Council. And I know that this is a really hard job that you all do. You are not often appreciated sometimes by your community and sometimes people are not very nice to you when you're serving in elected life. And another nice thing about working with AWC is that you get to meet other people who know what you're going through. And you all put in so many hours into this work. I know you're working really hard to serve your communities. And I know you don't always hear that people appreciate you, so I just want to tell you all tonight that I appreciate you. And we're here to support you in any way that you need. So thank you for your service. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, I think often we don't bring back and share what we've learned from conferences, but just a couple of the last connections at the last conferences that we've attended. Came back with the idea for the teen centers that came from National League of Cities. And so that's a direct thing that we're working and implementing on now. I've been connected with and talking to a board member from the Seattle Homelessness Authority and lessons learned about what they've done. But it's really hard to make those connections if you don't have that opportunity. So I appreciate AWC and I think that this city of Spokane has had a lot of benefits that we can, that help us in our work too. And so I think we should do a better job sharing what we've learned with other council members, but.
Sharing is good.
That's always a struggle.
Sharing is good.
I would say too that MRSC has been a huge help.
Yes.
And I don't know if people know about that, but it's just like your own little personal law library.
Yes.
And even if you're not a lawyer, you can ask them anything. And there's usually, are there three or four lawyers that are, or are there more?
There might even be more on their side, but they're so wonderful and they're our partner organization. We work so closely with them and we do a lot of joint trainings with them. They're just outstanding. They're just, I love MRSC. They're awesome.
And I just stumbled on it by accident and I thought, oh my goodness, this is great. I'm not telling anybody. It's my own little personal law firm, so.
Well, and you shouldn't have to stumble upon it by accident. That's one of the things I would just again encourage people to come to that Newly Elected Officials, Elected Officials Essentials, because we'll tell you about all those things. These are so many resources out there that folks don't necessarily know about unless they do come to those. And if there's anything that you're, I promise you, if there's something that you're looking for information about, we've got information about it or we can hook you up with someone who does. So please feel free to rely on us in that regard. The other thing I will say is that the other benefit we provide to your city is we bring quite a lot of tax revenue into your city because we do quite a lot of conferences and trainings here and bring quite a lot of folks into the city to do those trainings. So we, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with the city. It's such a beautiful gem here and people are always so excited to come. We always get huge turnout when we do them in Spokane because people love to come here. It's so beautiful, so.
Great. Any other questions?
I'll just say that it's not a secret because I serve on the MRSC board. They have over 16 attorneys that is available. And when I shared that with the administration, they also did not know that that was a resource.
Exactly, yeah. And I just, I stumbled upon it back in, I don't know, 2010. So, yeah.
Better job of communicating, but thanks.
Well, and I know that MRSC has been looking for new board members. And so if you are a big super fan there, Council President, maybe we should, we should talk about getting you on that board. She says, no, 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 I don't need that.
No more assignments, please.
Got you. I understand, I understand.
All right, anything else?
No, thank you.
Deanna, thank you so much for coming here.
Great, thank you.
Sharing and informing us about AWC because it is a wonderful organization. And thanks for being at the helm and doing all the hard work you do.
Thank you so much. And I will say, while I'm here in town, we're also getting together with a number of the mayors from Spokane County to talk about the fires, talk about different issues that are going on in the community. And so I know that Councilmembers Wilkerson and Zepone will be there. I believe that your mayor is also coming. And if any of you would like to join us for lunch on Wednesday, please follow up with me. I know the mayors of Cheney and Liberty Lake and Spokane Valley are going to be there and Millwood. So we're going to be getting together to talk about how we can work together regionally. So looking forward to that as well while I'm here in town.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. All right, we're going to switch gears here and we're going to do public, open forum. Oh, golly. We're going to vote on our Public Facilities District appointee. And remind me what her name was again? Oh, Kami. All right. We interviewed her this afternoon. So can I have a motion to point?
Do you want to do all three?
Do you want to do them all at once?
We could do them all at once if you like.
Okay, so we have Bicycle Advisory Board, Brian, and the CHHS Board. So you want to do them all at once?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, make your motion.
Make a motion to approve all the appointees that's presented for council for the PFT, the bicycles, and CHHS.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Right, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and then opposed, so it carries. We have three new commissioners and thank you for your service. All right, now, meanwhile, back to.
Shall I read them in? Kami Ekins, first term, Public Facilities District Board, four-year term, August 22nd, 2023 through August 21st, 2027. Brian Faltesek, first term, Bicycle Advisory Board, three-year term, 8/28, August 28th, 2023 through August 27th, 2026. Jerry Rathbun, second term, Community Housing and Human Services Board, three-year term, March 17th, 2023 through March 16th, 2026.
Thank you. All right, now we switch gears. Open forum, and I did get a request from a frequent attendee to council meetings that I should read in its entirety, the council rules. However, that's six pages. I'm not going to do that. I'll give you the highlights. And essentially, this is a limited open forum, so it's confined to matters discussed and related to the affairs of the city. So we try and keep it to the affairs of the city. No clapping, no cheering, no booing, no public outbursts. There is a two-minute time limit for open forum and then at the legislative session, legislative testimony is three minutes. Essentially, please treat each other with respect as well as the folks here up on the dais. So the first person, and let's come down in threes if we could, Sunshine, Tanya, and Catherine, you want to come down? Welcome.
Thank you. Sunshine Wigan from Spokane. Again, I'm going to bring up, we have Tommy Aldridge, level three sex offender, living next to, in the Alberta apartments. I've called the sheriff, there's a detective on it, nothing's being done. He's not updated on his address. There is a kids program, the cup of cool water is there, there's Roots Hall where there's kids actively there. There's kids in the apartment building. I volunteer at our place, the food bank. And on Wednesday, from 3:00 to 6:00, we'll have Red Cross there for anyone who wants to drop off donations for fire victims. Also, my month has been, I have complex post-traumatic stress disorder. And if we're not going to put people in Canon shelter, we should put a locker system in there from the blessings would like to do. The reason being, what my complex post-traumatic stress, I've been in my apartment seven months. Every three days, I put my stuff in storage and then I take it out again and I put it back and out and back. I have spent 10 years in housing out of 30. It's very devastating for me to take it out of the storage unit. I don't feel like my grandma's stuff is safe in my apartment because the cost of an apartment, $1,200 versus $65 for a storage unit. And so I think that program's really effective. It also helps a lot of people when they need to go to work to put their valuables in there. And I think we should charge money for it, a dollar or $2 a day. Why? Because that could pay the electricity and help us a little. Our community really likes being able to help our community, if that makes sense. It builds our self-esteem to know that we can help each other.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you, you guys.
Thanks, appreciate it. Tanya and Catherine and then Zachary.
Thanks for calling me up. Right now, I think the people that need help, you know, like with surgeries and stuff, doctors need to get on to those people, you know, because they're not, there's some people that are hurting inside from like some people slamming doors, you know, and they're not, and doctors are not fixing the problem, you know. And I think they should, and they should see why they're hurting inside too, you know. And I think they should, people that have brothers and sisters, you know, too, they should start going and seeing their brothers and sisters wherever they are too, you know, because they, when they pass away, you know, they might be thinking about saying there's ourselves, you know, they should have went and saw them when they were alive.
Thank you, Tanya.
Yeah.
Catherine and then Zachary and Will.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Corrick. I'm a licensed mental health counselor, a peer support coach, and I have lived experience in mental illness since age 25. I haven't spoken about that too much, the latter part, because of the stigma attached. And I hope by speaking out as a public person that that will help to reduce some of the stigma. One idea I've been thinking about, piggyback on Sunshine's idea that we as a community like to help our fellow citizens, is the idea of creating some kind of a volunteer mentorship service for persons experiencing homelessness or about to experience homelessness, maybe right on the edge. I have heard story after story of persons who have made it out of homelessness or who have been prevented from falling in due to multiple traumas, stack traumas, all of that, because of the intervention of mentors. And I think if we had some kind of a formal program whereby people with lived experience or other kinds of experience could volunteer one or two hours a week, maybe, and require nothing more than matching service, okay? I was, I worked part-time for Big Brothers Big Sisters when I was in graduate school. It's very similar to that program where the bigs mentor the littles. And families are looking for certain things, bigs are looking for certain things. It could work that way. It could work that way with a mentorship program. So I wanted to throw that idea out for the community to start to think about right now. Maybe you have a skill that you could share with others, and I'm speaking to the public right now, but, or anybody here for that matter. One or two hours a week isn't that much. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Catherine. Zachary, then Will, and Derek.
My name is Zach McGuckin. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I live in Spokane. I'm here to talk about the, some recent things, first with the mayor attending the rally put on by Matt Shea, and then additionally, also last month, we had our police chief talk about how minors should not have a right to legal representation. In both of these instances, there was a lot of far-right dog whistling, with the police chief talking about how if they're old enough to decide their gender, that's not the exact quote, but that was the gist of what he was saying, they're old enough to not have legal representation. I think that there's no coincidence that this is happening right now. It's coinciding with a lot of things. It's no coincidence that, you know, we have all these strikes happening. We're living in a crisis of capital, and we need this city hall to side with the people. Anyone who hasn't endorsed the mayor and the police chief's right-wing dog whistling, I've heard people from city council endorse it. I've never heard anyone condemn it. And you all need to actually take a stand and side on the side of the people, not on the side of our politicians that are working with fascistic elements of our society. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, and after Will is Derek, and then Terry.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings. I am a proud veteran. But on Friday, three Spokane City Council members wrote a statement denouncing Mayor Nadine Woodward. Why? She went to an event with a domestic terrorist who happens to be a veteran just like me. He's a Bronze Star. I mean, I can list a lot of his accomplishments. But because you guys are going off of a faulty investigation, and I know I don't have time to talk about that, but basically, so basically, when I seen that and I read the statement on Spokane City Council letterhead, and it was from Mr. Gunn, I don't know who he is, but, the problem I have with that, I wish you guys would denounce Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood, Margaret Sanger, Paul Dillon. The reason why I say that is because these people that you guys mentioned, the Church of Planned Parenthood, they, yeah. So Paul Dillon, who's running for mayor, and also someone that's, you guys show favoritism towards the president. I got some emails, like 97 out of 1,550 emails that show...
We're not making this personal.
No, I'm not making it personal. I'm just going to show that you're not who you say you are. You're not for the people. You're for a big business, and this person was emailing you, and you were emailing back and forth.
Do you want to keep it?
I am. I haven't mentioned no names, so I'm just going to leave it at that. But you don't like the truth, and the truth's going to be told. Thank you.
Okay. Derek next, Terry, and then Julie Garcia. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Derek Azaro. I'm from the Logan District. I want you to know that I do not belong to any organization that is a nonprofit. It's getting paid to come here and speak on all these meetings. I'm a private citizen, taxpaying homeowner, just like my neighbors who also rent, pay taxes. And I'd like to personally give a satisfaction to two of my district council members that work with me and my neighbors on a very serious safety issue in my neighborhood affecting the children of the next-door junior high school, Yashaura Brand New High School. My two representatives worked with me over a year and a half now, and I was working on it before that. I want to personally thank them for all the effort they've done, along with their assistance. I don't want anybody in this city to believe that all council members are bad, and which none of you are. Each of you are representing your constituents in your neighborhood that are also paying taxes and contributing to this city. Your efforts are appreciated by me, my neighbors, especially on the efforts that went on for us, and by no means that I denounce any of you for your efforts. Like I said, I do not come in here as a paid person, working for any nonprofit organization on a personal agenda of their own. I come here as a private citizen, like a lot of these other people in this room who watch, and they pay their taxes, and that's where the money comes from. When you come in here and ask for money from the city, you're asking for the taxpayers' money of your neighbors. So if you don't appreciate the work that's being done by all the members of this council and any in the future, then I suspect you probably should start putting in your own personal effort. I come in here and speak on my dime and my time, on the benefits of my neighborhood and my neighbors, to help better the kids in our neighborhood. Logan District has, I think, probably the highest amount of children in the entire city. When you combine Gonzaga, Gonzaga Prep, Logan Elementary, Yashaura, and all the other schools in our district, we, I think, have probably more children than anybody in any neighborhood in this city. And I can tell you that my neighbors and I, our primary goal in our neighborhood is under one program, and that's to protect the children of our neighborhood every way we possibly can, either ourselves, working with our neighbors and the kids that come around, or coming to our representatives, which are Cathcart and Bingle. Those two men, I thank them 100%. It's a lot of effort. Two years I've worked on this with them, and I thank them for that. So I don't want the public to believe that all of you are bad, just because you don't get, they don't get their way. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Hill, Julie Garcia, and Regina. Is Julie here? Are you? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Council President. Am I okay?
Yes, you're good.
Good evening, Council President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Terry Hill, longtime Spokane resident. Last week during council's incorrect vote on vehicle purchase, a council member questioned the efficiency of the SPD. Initially, that comment sailed over my head, but it resonated with me later. Seems to me, I can't cite any numbers, but it seems to me that the police overtime budget is very out of whack, and police response time to anyone not, anyone who doesn't have the mayor or the police chief on speed dial, is very long. That doesn't sound like efficiency to me. Oftentimes, I pass homeless encampments, Spokane's leading industry, Spokane's fastest-growing industry, and I see a row of police cars. And I ask myself, how many of these officers are necessary to do this job? And how much of this is political theater? Perhaps engineered by somebody short on public service experience, but long on media Last night, there were two shootings in Spokane, at East 2300 Euclid, a domestic violence instance, and at East 2101 First, a street fight that turned rather ugly. Both of these incidents are serious and require a strong police response, no doubt about it. Following those events on social media, I read comments like, "Yeah, I saw five cars barreling down this street. I saw four cop cars going down that street. The whole area is full of flashing blue lights." Again, I question, how many of these officers are necessary, and how much political theater is involved in this? I don't question...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, Julie, I got ahead of myself, sorry. Julie, Regina, and Juan.
Good evening. I'm here for a whole different matter, but I thought this was my once-a-year time to remind you that winter's coming and that there are an unprecedented amount of people experiencing homelessness still outside. I have underestimated it. Taking, now that we're doing outreach, Jules Helping Hands is doing outreach, two teams, seven days a week, we did not realize the amount of people that are still out there and unsheltered. We are seeing and engaging with between 200 and 400 unique individuals a day, and 2,700 each week. I think that something more than the track shelter or libraries open will, will not suffice this year. I don't know what else we do, but something has to be done. There's just an enormous amount of people out there struggling.
Go ahead.
I'm Regina Thompson. I'm one of, work for Jules Helping Hands.
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
One of the outreach leaders. Today, I touched at least 200 people. And when there's two teams, we touch at least four. There's just not, I agree with Jules, and that's what I'm asking you guys to take a look at, we do not have enough beds for these people. As it stands today, there's 400 beds taken at the Trent Shelter. That leaves 44 beds. I touched 400 today, or 200 today, at least, at least 400 every other day. We just need you guys to address that we need some beds for these people. Winter's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is Juan. Juan, are you out there? Now Juan. All right. Going to switch gears again, and we're going to have Ms. Farnsworth read our consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. One, five-year value blanket with Coaxure, Chalons Falls, Washington, for the purchase of dual-certified wildland uniform pants not to exceed $430,000. Two, purchased from JDL Digital Systems, Inc., doing business as Airship Industries, Inc., Redmond, Washington, of airship video management system for the Spokane Police Department to allow storage of surveillance video using existing security cameras from the Regional Evidence Management Facility for two years, $43,520. Three, value blanket amendment renewal, two of two, with LJ Oil Co., Inc., Spokane Valley, Washington, for the purchase of ultra-low sulfur number-two di diesel and supporting equipment for the waste-to-energy facility from October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024. Total cost not to exceed $175,000 plus tax. Due to the escalating price of diesel, an additional $15,000 needs to be added to the current value blanket, which runs through September 30th, 2023. Four, value blanket amendment with Dykman, Spokane Valley, Washington, for the as-needed purchase of variable-frequency drives for the waste-to-energy facility from December 15th, 2022 through December 14th, 2023, additional $15,000. Total annual cost, $85,100 plus tax. Five, value blanket renewal, two of two, with LJ Oil Co., Inc., Spokane Valley, Washington, for the purchase of Chevron lubrication products and other miscellaneous items as needed for the waste-to-energy facility from October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024. Annual cost not to exceed $55,000 plus tax. Six, repairs and maintenance from Pope machinery, Eugene, Oregon, of work and road profiler and Vogel paper for the street department, $99,232.05, including tax. Seven, two-year value blanket with Galls LLC Spokane for the Spokane Police Department procurement of ballistic body armor and external carriers from August 1st, 2023, to July 31st, 2025, utilizing Washington State contract number 03720, $400,000. Eight, contract amendment with ABM Industry Groups LLC Spokane for janitorial services for Spokane Police Department properties, increasing the contract amount due to the labor and industry's prevailing wage increase of 55 cents per hour, and adding the new South Precinct location, annual additional amount, $7,690.24. Total contract amount, $59,235.72. Nine, outside special counsel contract amendments with Stewart A. Estes and the law firm of Keating, Buckland, and McCormick, Inc., PS, Seattle, Washington, to assist the city in the legal matters of A, the estate of David Schaefer et al., the city of Spokane, additional $50,000, total contract amount, $100,000. B, the estate of Robert Bradley et al., the city of Spokane et al., additional $100,000, total contract amount, $150,000. Ten, outside special counsel contract amendment with Summit Law Group, Seattle, Washington, to assist the city in labor negotiation and human resource advice, additional $75,000, total contract amount, $200,000. Eleven, contractors Control Solutions Northwest for the chiller replacement at the combined communications building, $121,920, plus applicable sales tax, requesting a 10% contingency reserve as well for any additional work. Twelve, inter-local agreement with Spokane School District Number 81 to reimburse the school district for actual costs associated with the full width paving of Lamont Street from 30th Avenue to 33rd Avenue from August 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2023, $178,000. Relates to special budget ordinance C36430. Thirteen, inter-local agreement with Spokane High, Spokane School District Number 81 to establish funding for two school-based health centers at North Central High School and Shadle Park High School from September 1st, 2023, to June 15th, 2024. Maximum cost, $300,000. Fourteen, four-year Spokane Fire Department Local 29 Safel Bargaining Unit tentative agreement from January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2024. Fifteen, amendment to inter-agency agreement between Spokane Municipal Court and the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to provide additional grant funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for drug and alcohol testing for DUI court participants from October 1st, 2022, to September 30th, 2023, additional $25,000 revenue. Total grant amount, $75,000. Relates to special budget ordinance C36431. Sixteen, low bid of Shamrock Paving, Inc., Spokane, for 2023 residential chip seal project, $1,462,000. An administrative reserve of $146,200, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Reported the mayor of pending A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through August 18th, 2023, total $7,252,930.98, with Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $6,355,928.07. B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through August 19th, 2023, $9,365,135.36. City council meeting minutes, July 31st and August 24th, 2023. Do we need to request the motion on this?
Number 19.
Okay. We did. Okay. Nineteen, agreement amendment B with the Salvation Army Spokane for operation of the Trent Resource and Assistance Center, increasing funding from additional sources under REACH 1, Washington State Department of Commerce, rural funding, and ARPA, $3,500,000. Total contract amount, $9,140,586. Deferred from and substituted on August 21st, 2023.
Okay, we have five people signed up to speak. First person is Sunshine. Yeah, I see. And after that is Dennis, and then onward. This is consent agenda.
This is the one, Sunshine from Spokane, sorry, the one on the janitorial, right? Okay. I think it should be raised 75 cents per hour or a dollar. I think it should be more than 55 cents. I think it should be more than 55 cents. We're adding another precinct that they're going to be cleaning, the janitorial, but it's really hard and taxing on your body to do that work. And also, one of the most important jobs on the totem pole, as it represents our city and helps provide a safe environment, cleanliness, says a lot about us as a whole. So I think it's a very undervalued position, and I think they deserve more than 55 cent raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, then Anwar, and then Angel.
Thank you, council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Regarding OPR 2023-0448, why is the city covering the cost of paving roads as part of the Spokane Public Schools project? If we all look at our property tax bills, you'll see that the largest piece of it is Spokane Public Schools, and yet they still come to the city seeking more subsidies. And while we're on schools, OPR 2023-0849. So here we go, putting health clinics in schools. I see this agreement says that unused space can be reclaimed for this purpose. So you're telling me that there's so many unused classrooms in our newly rebuilt Shadle Park and North Central High Schools that we're turning them into a health clinic? I read in the agreement that you'll use just under 1,000 square feet to make a reception area, two exam rooms, and an area for the health providers. Tell you what, I hope not to hear of any lack of space or need for portable classrooms at Shadle Park or North Central. And a health clinic inside these schools? Will there be any requirement that parents are notified if their students utilize these health services? Will any sort of therapeutic or medicine be provided to students without their parents' informed consent or even against their parents' wishes? Will experimental jabs that are known to cause heart issues in boys and unknown long-term effects in girls and boys reproductive systems be provided without parental notification and consent? Will mental health counseling, possibly from a provider with views that are contrary to or even markedly in opposition to a child's upbringing by his or her parents, be provided without parental notification and consent? Will other medications affecting reproduction be provided without parental notification and consent? Will puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones be provided without parental notification and consent? And for anyone out there shaking their heads and saying these things don't happen without parental consent, please check your ignorance and look yourself the age at which a child, such as your daughter, can, whether she has a valid condition or whether she is being socially influenced by friends, outside actors, and/or activists, at what age your daughter can exclude you, her parents, from her medical decisions? And then you think about whether the convenience of walking down the hall and into the health clinic that is incorporated into the school, combined with all the falsehoods and lies that you're being forced down your throat and you better accept it, or even more of a bigot than you already are, is something you might have concern about. It's moot, of course, because we all know that teenagers are perfectly well-adjusted and competent to make permanent life-changing decisions without their parental guidance, right? Oh, yeah. And of course, whether you agree with it or not, all your taxpayer dollars are paying for this. First of all, the funding for the school building and then refurbishment in the first place, and now the ARPA plan dollars that are part of our COVID relief funds that are contributing to the massive inflation you're all suffering under. Doesn't that sound swell? Thank you.
Thank you. Anwar, Angel, and then Will.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and a 23-year police accountability expert. Speaking on Item 9 regarding the city hiring again outside special counsel from Seattle to deal with the wrongful death cases of those killed by Spokane police. Must I remind this council, the last time the city used this law firm in a wrongful death case, this law firm's work product resulted in the $4 million settlement to the family of David Novak. In the Novak case, this law firm intentionally stalled the case and held bad-faith settlement meetings with the family, which these delay tactics were also an effort by the law firm to bloat their bills to the city, which added up to about $0.5 billion. Plus, this law firm was also fined by the judge $10,000 for intentionally hiding SPD documents, which this judge has rarely fined a party in their court because of the deliberate nature of the hiding of the documents, the judge did so. SPD's hidden documents showed that the department knew very well that the officer that killed David Novak was showing major signs of burnout before, during, and after the shooting, yet SPD kept him on the streets with only a letter of counseling added to his file, which that letter had no follow-up nor any resources given to that officer to deal with his many burnout issues. After the shooting, SPD gave this officer a promotion and a raise, even though the letter of counseling clearly stated that the officer was unfit for promotion due to his lack of emotional intelligence. So, the Seattle law firm that the city hired for the Novak case consciously chose to hide these documents from a jury as part of their legal strategy, which that jury was being asked to award up to $27 million to the family. Why does this matter about what happened in the Novak case? Well, some of the same officers involved in the Novak shooting would then kill Robert Bradley, as well as the officer who killed David Schaefer also killed Daniel Craven in 2017. This is a perfect example of the many problems this police department has with the same cluster of officers responsible for multiple killings time and time again. Which, due to that cluster of officers, the facts show that on average, SPD is the third deadliest police force in the nation. Furthermore, the city hiring the Seattle law firm is also contributing to the department's third ranking due to their profit-driven legal strategies, which does not seek justice and in fact harms those families that have been touched by police violence. Respectfully, I ask, please end this contract with this law firm and settle with these families now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and Angel's going to testify on another topic, so last is Will.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I am going to be speaking on seven, the OPR 2023-0846 for body armor and external carriers. I am 100% for that. I seen an article actually today by Crem2, and as a veteran, it saddens me that, you know, our military, at times, we can't even get proper equipment. I mean, I just think back to the Persian Gulf War when we didn't have armor on our Humvees and stuff. So that's just an example, but I'm mentioning this because they said that U.S. citizens are donating record amounts of body armor to Ukraine. So while our, our law enforcement in the United States, and this is not just Spokane, this is all over, they can't get proper equipment, they basically got to beg you guys to get money, which I'm glad they're getting 400,000, but it's just crazy. And this donated body armor is going over to support a war. I've been to war. I've been to the Persian Gulf. I've been all over the world. And I just find it crazy while our law enforcement needs money for vehicles, they need money for employees, the higher crime check needs employees. What do you see? An article talking about how people are so happy to donate to another country to protect their country while our country, here in Spokane, it's very dangerous. On Sunday, they had a whole block roped off with police tape. Go to get breakfast because somebody was killed underneath one of them railroad underpasses. You guys could look that up, it's in the news today. But thank you.
Okay. So we're going to take number 13 separately at Councilmember Zepone's request. So I'd like to, let's vote on everything except number 13. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
What's that? Okay. Good. Right. And now, number 13, all those in favor.
Wait, can I make a comment on it first?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm going to abstain from this because the school-based health centers are going to go to North Central, which I teach at, so I want to abstain from that. I'm on the school-based partnerships with the city and was proud to bring this forward as an idea, and then the school district identified which schools they thought would have the biggest impact. And we've talked about this as a council repeatedly over the last year, probably, as this is getting kicked off. And the school district are, from the council side, we said that we wanted just the schools with the highest number of kids in need, and they identified Shadle and North Central. Since I am on the school side, I've seen it at North Central where it's going to go. Staff are really excited when they said that this was going to be a possibility and likely to happen. It was to a round of applause. So the staff is very excited, students are. At Shadle Park High School, the staff is actually giving up their staff lounge for this place, so it's not going to be displacing any classrooms. And I think it's really important to dispel any myths around this. It does require parental consent to sign up and enroll in school-based healthcare, so kids can't just walk in. And then it follows all minor consent laws, as if you were going to the CHAZ clinic down the street or in the, in the school. Rogers already has a CHAZ clinic, so it's duplicating this exact thing. And it's really important because this is a great investment in our health and education equity. It improves school attendance, it decreases costs for health services, it reduces emergency room visits, which keeps all of our costs down for, and it just gets all kids, especially low-income, better opportunities to succeed in life. So I'm very supportive of this, but I will be abstaining.
Any other comments about this, number 13? All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstinent? There we go. All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to special, special budget ordinances. Ms. Farnworth.
Ordinance is amending ordinance number C36345, passed by the city council, December 12, 2022, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency and appropriating funds in ordinance C36430, Traffic Calming Measures Fund. One, increase appropriate appropriation by $78,000. A, of the increased appropriation, $78,000 is provided solely for construction of fixed assets. And Transportation Benefit District Fund. One, increase appropriation by $100,000. A, of the increased appropriation, $100,000 is provided solely for construction of fixed assets. This action arises from the need to pave a portion of LaMont Street per the ILA with District 81. Relates to Consent Agenda, item number 12.
Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle, do you have anything to say about these? Guess that's a no. All right. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Please go on.
Ordinance C36431, miscellaneous grants fund. One, increase revenue by $25,000. A, of the increased revenue, $25,000 is provided by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission as part of the impaired driving strategic plan. Two, increase appropriation by $25,000. A, of the increased appropriation, $25,000 is provided solely for procurement of drug tests. This action arises from the need to accept the Washington Traffic Safety Commission's DUI amended court grant. Relates to Consent Agenda, item number 15.
Council commentary? Okay. Councilmember Bingle, anything to say? No. All right. Prepare to vote. How do you vote, Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
Thank you. Great. We deferred 0068 indefinitely, so do you want to move on to 0074 and fill in the name that we indicated at briefing?
Appointing, Resolution 2023-0074, appointing Ryan Ulrich to fill the position of Spokane County, Spokane City Council Member, District 2, Position 1, vacated by Lori Kneer.
All right. Council commentary?
There's a testimony.
Oh, there is. You're right. Dennis Flynn, and then Will. Sorry, got ahead of myself.
Thank you. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Welcome, Ryan, to the city council, as I do for all the other council members frequently. I pray God grants you the gifts of wisdom, fortitude, understanding in council.
Thank you. Will? He's out in the lobby. You're not, you're not wanting to testify?
I, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Did you want to testify on this?
On, where were you going to?
Appointing our next council member?
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewlings. I am a resident of downtown, and I just wanted to say, hopefully, we get somebody, I mean, I don't know, like I mentioned earlier in open forum, it's just really a letdown. I get up here and speak to you guys, guys look at me, smile, say hi, but then to know how you really feel about open forum, I mean, and it's all email, it's, it's shocking. And I've been coming here since 2019, and I've been, all kinds of stuff's been said about me, and you know, and, you know, I have the prior city council president even helping activists that were attacking me. And I've tried to get help and different stuff, but basically, I hope somebody, you get somebody with some integrity and that follows the ethics policy that the city council put forth in 2015. And at times, I don't think you guys even realize or remember that you guys took an oath, you guys are public servants. And just the stuff that I see on, through these emails, they talk about a scandal with Chief Midol. I think if, when, when I get the rest of these, there's going to be a big scandal, and they'll see what our city government, how they really operate, how they create noise ordinances and different things, just to silence people. But thank you.
All right. Now, council members.
Well, I'll start by saying thank you to all the applicants. There were excellent applicants from District 2, so yay District 2, for the ones who wanted to step up. It really was a difficult decision, all those that came down and went through the interview process. Thank you as one more step of your commitment to our community and wanting to serve. It is only a three-month commitment, but there's lots of work to do, and so we'll be voting on Mr. Ulrich tonight, and we will welcome him and support him as best we can.
Councilmember Stratton, anything?
Just thanks to everybody that participated, and I think that this decision is a good one. I think that there's some good experience that Ryan can bring to us and bring to the community, so I'm happy to support this.
Councilmember Bingle, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'll say something. I know that Ryan is going to be approved tonight. I'll be, I'll be voting against, not in, any condemnation of Ryan. I just think we had a couple better options when we were looking at a three-month window of putting in somebody with, with more experience when it came to the city, the city budgets, the inner working. So for that reason, I'll be voting against, but I will welcome him to the team after he's appointed.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll comment again, thank you to all the applicants. It's always a little stressful when you have to publicly interview for your job interview instead of privately doing it. And everyone did great and had a lot of diverse skills and perspectives that they would have brought. I'm glad to be supporting Ryan Ulrich for the next council member. I'm confident he'll do a great job in this short period of time. I was really impressed with the depth of his experience and connection to the community, having led outreach efforts over the last few years to understand the priorities and connections, not only in his district but across the city. Very confident he'll represent District 2 well. I was a little disappointed by our process from council, so.
well. I was a little disappointed by our process from council side. That was behind the scenes, but otherwise, I think this was a, a great selection. I'll be excited to work with him.
Welcome, Ryan. Look forward to having you on the team.
And this was a very hard decision because we had some really good applicants. And in my head, I'd narrowed it down to two. And truly, it was a toss-up. They were both equally, I felt, equally qualified. But in the end, you have to make a decision. And I think Ryan will do a really good job. And I will welcome him wholeheartedly to the team. And he's got some really intense days in the next three months, so I hope he takes his vitamins. Let's just say that. All right. So prepare to vote. Great. There we go. And Mr. Councilmember Bingle, you're no?
Nay.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. And congratulations, Mr. Ulrich. And Jacoby will be in contact with you to go through the next procedures that you need to do to become a fully-fledged one of us. Great. Next up, Ms. Farnworth.
Okay, this is what I'm going to be reading in full.
Okay.
Resolution Number 2023-0075: A Resolution Considering the Proposal by the Spokane Regional Collaborative for Spokane Regional Authority for Homelessness, Housing, Health, and Safety. Whereas, on February 27, 2023, the City Council adopted Resolution 2023-0018, approving in principle a 90-day due diligence period during which the Spokane Regional Collaborative, SRC, would explore the feasibility of creating a regional authority to address homelessness in Spokane County, including the City of Spokane and neighboring municipalities. And whereas, the City of Spokane initially joined Spokane County and the cities of Spokane Valley, Medical Lake, Airway Heights, and Chinny, all later joined by the City of Liberty, uh, the City of Liberty Lake in support of the SRC effort. And whereas, the 90-day due diligence work was completed by SRC on June 28, 2023, and the SRC presented a set of recommendations and draft legal documents for the creation of a public corporation pursuant to RCW 35.21 and RCW 39.34.030 designated the Spokane Regional Authority for Homelessness, Housing, Health, and Safety. Hereafter, the Regional Authority, which said documents included a proposed inter-local agreement, ILA, that would commit the City of Spokane to long-term participation in the Regional Authority. And whereas, the City Council is generally supportive of a joint and cooperative undertaking to coordinate and provide homeless and housing services within the Spokane region, and agrees that a Regional Authority, if properly configured and its operational expenses fairly apportioned, could approve the delivery of homelessness, affordable housing, and behavioral health services, and could enhance outcomes for those receiving such services in Spokane County. And whereas, the SRC presented the City Council along with other legislative bodies of Spokane County and municipalities with Spokane County a draft resolution styled a resolution of Spokane County, City of Spokane, City of Spokane Valley, and cities of Medical Lake, Airway Heights, Chinny, and Liberty Lake in support of providing leadership and staff support for the period of August 1, 2023, through October 15, 2023. Hereafter, the SRC resolution, and whereby pursuant to the SRC resolution, the City Council would consent to making City of Spokane data, resources, and personnel available to the SRC. And whereas, on July 31, 2023, the City Council deferred adoption of SRC resolution based on part on concerns regarding a lack of full, regular, and timely accounting of all costs, funding, and outcomes associated with the city's commitment of resources and personnel to housing and homelessness initiatives, including all costs associated with the TRAC resource and assistance center, TRAC. And whereas, the city's administration has been unable to provide to the City Council a complete accounting of all costs, funding, and outcomes associated with the city's investment in housing and homelessness initiatives, including all costs associated with TRAC. And whereas, on August 3, 2023, the Mayor of Spokane issued Executive Order 2023-002, committing city leadership and staff support to the SRC with the intent of creating a regional authority for housing and homelessness. And whereas, the City Council agrees in principle with providing the SRC such information regarding the city's funding of programs such that the SRC can further develop the details of funding, staffing, contracts, and governance of the proposed regional authority, and further agrees that sharing of city data can inform the final drafting and execution of the legal documents necessary to form the authority under RCW 35.21 and RCW 39.34. And whereas, while waiting to explore the creation of a regional authority, the City Council recognizes the creation of such authority and the city's participation in it requires a detailed, unhurried, and deliberative process. And the City Council views the current timelines established by the SRC for both creation of the regional authority and the city's commitment to be unrealistic. And whereas, no mechanism has been identified by the SRC or Executive Order 2023-002 to determine the type and classification of city data to be shared with the SRC, and whether sharing of such data will require written agreement under RCW 39.34.240, or otherwise require special protocols for redaction and sharing under RCW.42, RCW 42.56. Nor is there any formal understanding regulating the SRC's use and sharing of said data. And whereas, the City of Spokane's Community Health and Human Services Department is understaffed and confronted with numerous existing challenges, and consequently is not currently equipped to provide data and personnel to the SRC on an accelerated basis. And whereas, any effort to combat homelessness and housing issues in Spokane is heavily dependent on the efforts of outside providers with expertise in providing homelessness, affordable housing, and behavioral health services, many of whom have expressed concerns about a regional authority and its initial governing principles, and whose input on the formation and operation of a regional authority must be considered by the City Council as it deliberates on the wisdom of participating in the regional authority. And whereas, the Continuum of Care Board, CHHS Board, Homeless Coalition, and Experienced Matters Spokane, all with expertise in homelessness, housing, and behavioral health services, and the related funding for such services, have submitted to the City Council their suggestions on the proposed regional authority, which must inform the final configuration of the regional authority, and whose written statements are attached to this resolution. Whereas, pursuant to RCW 39.35.030, the City of Spokane's participation in any regional public authority can only be approved by the City Council, the City of Spokane, as a legislative body of the City of Spokane pursuant to Section 5 of the Spokane City Charter. And whereas, the City Council believes the better approach for a regional effort to end homelessness and improve housing availability is to commit to formation of a regional authority via a limited short-term ILA solely for the purposes of allowing its govern, governing board, initial personnel, and interested providers an opportunity to identify the long-term operational, financial, and programmatic needs of the regional authority, including its sources of revenue. And whereas, once an existing regional authority and its governing board, initial personnel, and interested providers have an opportunity to provide to participating jurisdictions detailed recommendations, along with any revised governance documents relating to the proposed regional authority, all participating jurisdictions, including the City of Spokane, can then decide whether to participate in the regional authority on any long-term basis. And whereas, the City Council is willing to endorse a short-term commitment to a regional authority and willing to provide short-term funding for its operations based on certain terms and conditions set forth herein. And whereas, notwithstanding Executive Order 2023-002, the City Council wishes to establish clear limitations on the sharing of city data and personnel with the SRC to ensure that such sharing of information is consistent with state and local law and is consistent with the information shared with the City Council with respect to its deliberations regarding the proposed regional authority and overall funding of its homelessness, housing, public safety, and health programs. And whereas, considering Executive Order 2023-002 and the expectations it creates about the intentions of the City of Spokane within and among the other jurisdictions asked to participate in the authority, it is essential for the City Council to express its views on the extent and timing of the city's participation, participation in the authority. Now therefore, be it resolved that notwithstanding Executive Order 2023-002, the City Council will not undertake to evaluate or approve the city's participation in any regional authority unless any and all city's statistical data, information, accounting, financial, or other information pertaining to its homelessness, homelessness, housing, public safety, or health programs, personnel, and strategies that is shared with either the SRC or any persons or entity working in furtherance towards the study, creation, and or funding of the authority is fully and simultaneously shared with the City Council. And be it further resolved that of Spokane County, the City of Spokane Valley, and other potential participating jurisdictions enter a short-term commitment to a regional authority, and also commit to initial investment of startup funds for the regional authority in year 2024, the City of Spokane through its City Council is willing to commit to short-term participation in a regional authority and commit to an equal investment of startup funds for the regional authority on the following terms. Bullet point one, the SRC identifies the amount of funding needed in 2024 to operate the regional authority on a temporary basis, provides a detailed budget for operations through December 31, 2024, and identifies the expected startup contribution from each jurisdiction, all in a form acceptable to the City Council. Two, the existing draft ILA is revised to conform to the short-term commitment of the City of Spokane and other jurisdictions in a form acceptable to the City Council, and with the expectation that participating jurisdictions will approve the revised ILA by January 1, 2024. Three, the existing draft charter is revised to combine the primary scope of the regional authority to housing and homelessness issues and to limit its interest in public safety and criminal detention. Four, the existing draft charter of the regional authority is revised to provide that non-elected sector board members for the regional authority will be selected by the governing board based on nominations from the non-elected sector. Five, the existing draft charter shall be revised to provide that, notwithstanding any other provisions in the charter or the ILA, each participating jurisdiction shall have the right to withdraw from the regional authority based on any changes in state and federal law that, that alter or restrict the governing structure or powers of the governing board. Six, the existing draft charter of the regional authority is revised as necessary to ensure the regional authority does not assume any indebtedness until execution of a permanent ILA. Seven, the existing draft charter of the regional authority is revised as necessary to ensure no substantive decisions or actions of the regional authority, including hiring of permanent personnel, are made until there is a full complement of board members from the non-elected sector. Eight, Article 15, Section 4 of the draft charter is revised to provide all participating jurisdictions a right of inspection, examination, auditing, and copying equal to rights granted to the Spokane County. Nine, from the date of this resolution, the SRC and later the regional authority governing body provides monthly in-person updates to the City Council and the mayor of the formation, operational terms, and long-term planning efforts of the regional authority. Be it further resolved, the City Council will consider participation in a regional authority after 2024 and execution of permanent ILA only after the following. One, detailed and realistic plan for operations and funding of the regional authority acceptable to the City's Council. Two, development and adoption of bylaws of the regional authority acceptable to the City Council, and that ensure transparency, accountability, and efficiency in the decision-making structure. Three, comprehensive and informed plan for funding of the regional authority independent of restricted grant funds. Four, comprehensive, fair, and informed plan for transfer of current program funding of all jurisdictions. Five, comprehensive, informed, and fair plan for transfer of employees of the City of Spokane to regional authority. Be it further resolved, the City Council reserves the right to elect not to remain in a participating jurisdiction in the regional authority after the year 2024, and reserves the right to withdraw from any commitment to a regional authority prior to execution of a permanent ILA. And be it further resolved, that the City Council reserves the right to condition any approval of a permanent ILA on a detailed plan to relieve the city of the operational and capital expenses associated with TRAC sometime in the year 2024.
Wow. Well done, Mrs. Farnworth. All right. We've got quite a few people signed up. And so I'd appreciate it if you'd come down three at a time so we could keep things moving. We've got Sunshine, Tanya, and Catherine first up.
Sunshine Wigan from Spokane. This is on the homeless collaboration. So I'm asking you guys to have faith in my outreach community and go on their timeline because nobody can do it better than them. And please, I ask that you let them do it the right way the first time, if you give them the right amount of time that they are asking for. Because I would hate to see something this amazing be put together wrong and then we have to redo it. And I, the collaboration's always been there. It's, that's something that, it just, the unity is just amazing. So I'm just asking you have faith in them and go on their timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya, Catherine, then Tim.
This is about the homeless too. And I think that people that are homeless too should find other places than homeless shelters too. You know, they, they should have like relatives or family members to live with, you know, than on, on the streets. You know, family members should help the homeless too. You know, and they, they should shelter them until they find a place. And they should like, they, they should give them some food and, and clothing, you know, and, and teach them, you know, how, why they're homeless all the time too, you know. And they, and they should, they should take them to schools too.
Thank you, Tanya. Catherine, then Tim, and then John Alder.
Good evening, President Kinnear. My name is Catherine Corrick. And as you know, I'm a mental health counselor, licensed mental health counselor, a, an advocate for persons experiencing homelessness, a member of the Spokane Homeless Coalition, and a community volunteer for various groups. I support the concept, the overall concept of a regional approach to managing our response to homelessness. What I like in particular about this resolution is that it includes provisional participation, the opportunity to pull back if certain issues are not addressed, mandatory representation of the homelessness coalition on the non-elected board, removal of detention as a vehicle for solving homelessness, which has always created complications and more barriers for people experiencing homelessness, the importance of more fully addressing the essentials of the services and language proposed for the RHA, to flesh it out to fully address the needs of frontline providers and persons with lived experience, the need to fully recognize the record-keeping issues, and mandatory contribution of data. And just the commentary that it is difficult to get it right once you get it wrong. So let's get it right the first time and take the extra time upfront to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Tim, John, and Matthew.
Good evening. My name is Tim Hilton. I'm professor of social work at Eastern Washington University. Been studying housing homelessness for the past 15 years. I was very concerned by the original proposal's tough-love approach to addressing homelessness, as seen in the call for enforcement of the Sit and Lie Ordinance, involuntary detention of homeless people, and mandated participation in services. of homeless people, and mandated participation in services. I applaud the city council's amended proposal to remove detention and mandated services in the revised plan. Recently conducted a study of permanent supportive housing in Spokane, included in-depth interviews with 40 residents in permanent supportive housing programs. These were people who had lived on the streets for a long time, most had a combination of untreated mental illness, addiction, or serious and chronic health conditions. I asked them about their use of services in the community. Several had connected with service providers with the help of social workers and others from the permanent supportive housing agencies. Others were still reluctant to engage services because they had had very negative experiences with services in the past. Several spoke of traumatic experiences involving involuntary mental health holds, addiction treatment, and forced hospital stays. Others spoke about being treated with suspicion and hostility by healthcare providers. For them, avoiding services altogether is preferable because they do not trust health and social service providers, and they do not believe they offer the types of help they want. Detaining the homeless and forcing them into treatment will not build trust between people who are homeless and our service providers. And we've seen this in other cities that have tried and failed to force people into treatment as a means of reducing homelessness. We can do better than tough love. Let us create a system that makes services more accessible, client-centered, and trauma-informed, while recognizing that connecting the most vulnerable and traumatized members of our community with these services requires a patient and gentle hand. We need more carrot and less stick. The homeless in Spokane have had enough stick for many lifetimes. Thank you.
Thank you. And John, Matthew, and Larria.
John Alder, I live in northeast Spokane. A famous philosopher once said that be truly educated, you must know people as well as a designated field for your college degree. He went as far as working six months as a cab driver and six months as a bartender to do this. The original report by the SRC of the housing reminds me of this story. Oh, the story had a lot of facts, but like Rachel, the lady who asked the audience who attended this reading, "Why after $25 million am I still homeless?" I am happy to see the headline extended four months. So now in addition to your facts, maybe you go talk to people on the point-in-time reports. Look at stories accumulated by Terry Ganners at the Nans Union, the folks at Resident Action Project, and our folks back here in Joe's Health Pans. Get to know the people the money is being spent on as well as the facts in your report. Then you can maybe come up with solutions to the housing issues, but thank you for extending the deadline.
Thank you. And then Matthew.
Okay, good evening. I'm Matt Anderson. I'm a professor and the director of the Urban Planning Program at Eastern Washington University. I've studied housing market dynamics in a variety of contexts now for over 15 years. And I just want to comment on the initial proposed charter, the one that was read off here that you're voting on tonight's better, and I support it. But the stepped-up criminalization approach that the charter initially outlined, what I can say is that this approach has been tried and tested now in many cities across the country since the early 90s and has overwhelmingly been deemed a failure. Homelessness has not disappeared anywhere, with many cities now experiencing more homelessness than ever. Why? And why this crisis has spread to many other cities is due to the widening gap between average wages and housing prices. They're, of course, mediating factors, but this metric alone has been shown to determine homeless levels with striking predictability across the country. And for those unhoused individuals suffering from addiction and mental illness, these folks were much more likely to be able to deal with these issues behind closed doors, especially before 2016 in Spokane. Since then, housing prices have since more than doubled, so this gap has widened substantially in recent years, very rapidly. Even if all unhoused people suffered from addiction or mental illness, which we know is willfully untrue, the vast majority of people who suffer from these two conditions are not homeless, right, and do not become homeless. So this can't be the explanation. Yet this is what's most emphasized when reading the initial proposed charter. And indeed, these two conditions is what render homelessness most visible, but only being concerned with visible homelessness is shortsighted, as forcing people into shelters or jails does nothing to prevent more people from becoming homeless tomorrow, which is why this approach has never really worked. It's an endless mission, so there's no reason to conclude it'll work here any better unless the gap between average wages and housing prices comes down significantly, or we get way more subsidized in permanent supportive housing and more readily available mental health care. These are the things that need to be the priority, things that tend to be much more prevalent across the rest of the industrialized world where homelessness is typically far less of an issue. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Larria. Did I pronounce your name right? Is it Larria?
Larria.
Okay, got it wrong, sorry. And then Dennis and Jonathan.
Good evening. I'm Larria Shu, and I'm the executive director for the Smith Barbieri Progressive Fund. We provide grants and advocacy for nonprofits throughout the region who work with our most vulnerable communities to ensure they have the opportunity to thrive, not just survive. We are in a historic time. We can fundamentally change the regional approach to helping our houseless community. We can do this right, and we can do it together. I applaud the resolution and thank you for the considerations you've given it. I encourage you to vote yes tonight. While a regional approach to supporting our houseless community is a good idea, if it's done incorrectly, it will be devastating. The original regional authority proposal was largely created by three persons behind closed doors and with limited community input, despite multiple requests to have lived experience as a seat at the table. The proposal lacks critical elements for success, such as an equal voice for those impacted and a true navigation center, not TRAC, which, in the essence of time, I will refrain from the long list of challenges that make that warehouse nowhere near a navigation center that cares with compassion for people while getting them into housing. That's a conversation we'll have another day. The current proposal also includes detrimental strategies such as detention that will only exasperate the challenges for our houseless neighbors, not help them. The current proposal isn't best for our region. We can do better. We must do better. What other circumstances, when lives are on the line and a deeply complex issue, would experts not be brought in to provide guidance? There aren't any. Specialists are critical to understanding how to fix the most complex problems because they know better than anyone else what will work and what won't. Homelessness is no different. No one, and I repeat, no one, should consider themselves more knowledgeable about how to help our houseless community than those with lived experience and the service providers who assist them. They are the experts. It is absolutely imperative that those voices are brought into this conversation with an equal voice of participation. The resolution before you allows for this. You have the opportunity to listen and learn from the experts. In addition, you have the time to review a detailed budget and understand the long-term success and any financial shortfalls a regional authority may have. This resolution provides the time for a robust collection of data that can be analyzed to ensure the authority is built on data-proven success models and strategies that are modeled to fit, or molded to fit our region, meeting our unique needs and optimizing our unique opportunities. Homelessness and housing is a complex issue. Voting yes tonight indicates your commitment to getting this right through a thorough and thoughtful approach. This is the moment. We can do this right, and we can do it together. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Dennis, Jonathan, and Amy.
Hi, council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Start with the comment for 0074 that we're not doing tonight. I'm unsure why we need our city and the surrounding cities to contribute staff to such an effort since we already have a five-year plan to end homelessness, but snarky tongue-in-cheek comment aside, I do want to echo what the guy said earlier about appreciating what you're doing, right? Because this is not an easy issue, and this takes a lot of thought to do right, and so taking that extra time, I think, I applaud you for that, and I do support your decision on that. Why we would include language to limit the scope regarding public safety and criminal detention, yes, we can't make that the focus, but these are two obviously very intertwined aspects of life in general, of which homelessness is a subset, and specifically excluding them seems ridiculous scope omission. I noticed in this agreement that you talk about nothing being permanent, such as the transfer of employees until concrete budgets and plans are determined and accepted by the council. And I would like to warn the council now, resources and choices, right, I talk about that a lot, that I have yet to see a government bureaucracy willingly reduce itself in size. So I implore you to amend the direction to any regional authority to private industry is to be the preferred in any and all possible manners going forward. This will ensure the most bang for the buck, the most help for the homelessness who we're doing this for, the most sole fulfilling opportunity for citizen volunteers, the most minimalization of government funding, need to buy us taxpayers, who would all much rather contribute via money and/or time to these non-governmental solutions than to see the continued wasting of hard-earned dollars on overpriced burden. I also see the attached Spokane Regional Continuum of Care Recommendation Sheet talks about local plans to end homelessness in a community where everyone has a safe, stable place to call home. Can we please stop repeating this drivel? Homelessness has been recorded through all of human history, and saying we're going to end homelessness is naive, ridiculous, and relays to us that we don't know what we're talking about. We just have to accept that we need to help where we can and make choices on how we do that. The letter from the Community Housing and Human Services Board identifies many deficiencies in understanding regarding a regional authority, and I urge all of you to read it multiple times thoroughly. I think we've all been, I think we've all been part of a good idea that is poorly implemented, leading to failure at worst or major results at best. And from the Spokane Homeless Coalition, I'm sure their intents are pure, but they should be in no position to be making demands. They're demanding attendance at board meetings, I mean, which would probably be done anyway, requiring using them as the primary communication platform, requiring using them for education services and funding technology. These are wrong things to be making as demands. That's not how a partner works. Some of these things are all well and good and probably would occur anyway, but the demand should be dismissed as not acting as a partner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jonathan, Amy, and AJ.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Teeters, the policy director for Empire Health Foundation. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and to call attention to this resolution addressing the city and county's process and timeline for the development of a regional homelessness authority. I'd like to also especially thank council president Kinnear, council member Bingle, and the rest of the council team who paid special attention to the voices of service providers and others in our community who know that in tackling our regional challenges around homelessness and to collectively craft a regional response, it takes all of us, and that experience matters. This resolution before you reflects not only the concerns we voiced about the recommendations put forth by the Spokane Regional Collaborative, it shows that you've listened, and in this resolution, you've articulated our priorities as your priorities. This resolution acknowledges that we must come together and we must take time to get it right. Voting yes on this resolution will affirm that our voices and experience matter, and it will set us on a path to crafting practical solutions for a sustainable and equitable regional approach to reducing homelessness in our communities. We believe in the inherent humanity of our neighbors facing homelessness, and we remain committed to improving lives and outcomes, one by one, if needed. Again, want to thank you for taking this resolution up tonight, and please encourage you to vote yes and stand with us tonight as we're standing with you.
Thank you. Amy, AJ, and then Deb.
My name is Amy Manning. I work at the Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium, and I've been working in housing and homelessness for the last 22 years. I volunteer for agencies with, working with homelessness, and I've helped organize folks to get our voices to this table. And this table is an important table to be at since we have the experience, I have lived experience and I have work experience in this field, and it's important that we are at this table. So thank you for putting some of our recommendations into this resolution. I want to say really loudly and clearly that homelessness is a housing problem, and much of the language and the approach that the first resolution came up with and the report that was brought to you from Spokane Unite really had very stigmatizing language around homelessness, around poverty, and around people that are experiencing houselessness. I encourage you to vote yes on tonight's resolution, and I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to the considerations from people with lived experience and providers. Thanks.
Thank you. And AJ, Deb, and then Will.
My name is AJ Sanchez. I live in District 2. I've come here to talk about the regional homelessness authority. I support with Resolution 20230075. I am a member of the Youth Action Board. The Youth Action Board is a subcommittee of the Continuous of Care Board, made up of youth and young adults with lived experience of homelessness and housing insecurity. The Youth Action Board should be a key strikeholder in any discussion impacting the homelessness crisis response system. Our Youth Action Board has centralized in receiving over $2.5 million in youth homelessness demonstration project funds from HUD. I support considering participating in the regional homelessness authority in 2024. The impact of youth and young adults and members of the AB has been subject from the planning. Young people are ready and available to be part of this process. This process is so important that it shouldn't be rushed forward without the input of our experts. Young people are eager to be part of this process if given the chance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Deb, and Will, and Hallie.
Good evening. My name is Deb Elzinga, and I work for Community Frameworks. I live here in Spokane. First, I want to thank the city council leadership for listening to the concerns raised by the affordable housing providers and community members in regard to the regional authority initiative. My organization, Community Frameworks, advances affordable rental and homeownership options here in the Spokane area and throughout the Pacific Northwest. Our basic belief is that when people have a quality place to call home that allows them to live within their means, they can focus on the other important aspects of their lives. And when that happens, we all do better as a community. In listening to the initial presentation that was held at the convention center about the new authority, I kept listening for how this new entity would address the severe lack of housing options for those who can't afford market prices. Imagine my surprise and frustration when the main emphasis at that presentation was on the structure and that resolving our housing challenges mostly comes down to better coordination and integration of resources and services. Making improvements within our systems and investing in much-needed services is important. At the same time, there's an urgent need to provide affordable housing options, and without this, our efforts will only go so far. I applaud you for taking this step back so that we can approach this very complex issue with more due diligence and further exploration. I am also glad that you see the importance of hearing from the housing development and service providers and also from the people most impacted by our lack of affordable housing options. In my view, this is the best way to inform the priorities and approaches that will be the most effective to solve one of our region's most critical challenges. A famous architect once said, "Form follows function." That quote can be applied here in that analyzing the gaps in our current housing ecosystem as a way to inform the solutions and the structure makes a lot of sense. I am encouraged that there has been good energy and goodwill that has surfaced around this issue. Now we can use that positivity to find effective solutions and approaches that get to the core issues around housing and homelessness in our community. So I urge you to vote yes on this resolution, and I thank you for your work on this very important issue.
Thank you. And then Will, Hallie, and Derek.
My name is Will Hewings. I live downtown. I've been coming to city council meetings since like 2019, and this has been an ongoing thing on. you know, we're gonna be starting to cycle again, trying to figure out, you know, how to house these homeless and keep them out of the extreme cold. I mean, something needs to be done, and, you know, like, I'm kind of for this in a way, you know, like, it's a step forward, but so much needs to be done. I mean, one thing specifically, I mean, living downtown, you guys put all this money towards the homeless, and I still see it all over downtown, literally. People living, sleeping on the sidewalk, on cardboard boxes when I walk out my apartment. I mean, I have a heart, and it touches me seeing my fellow Americans live in that way. And just to know that our government, local and federal, will help out other people from other countries, but not our own people. So, I'm, I'm thinking of the southern border, people coming across, then I think of, you know, the, our, the war that we're about to be involved in. All that money, billions of dollars, could be going to help our people. And, you know, but instead, we, we do this every year. We try to figure out, you know, how we're gonna house these people, coming up with money, different, I mean, it's, it's really frustrating. And, you know, you guys are elected to serve the people. Sometimes I don't think that's what you're doing. I mean, you, you know, it seems like you're, some of your focuses are on other things instead of what you should be focusing on, what the people elected you for. So, I just hope something gets done. Next year this time, I hope I don't hear them talking about homeless. I hope, I hope we get past this. I mean, we got other things we need to take care of in this city, like public safety and some other stuff like that. But, thank you.
Great. And Hallie, Derek, and Justice.
I'm Hallie Birchnell. I'm a co-founder and ED at Compassionate Addiction Treatment. We're located on the corner, right near the corner of Division and Second Avenue. Thank you. I forgot for a second, where are we? And we, we were established specifically to help create culturally relevant services for people experiencing homelessness. And from that, I want to thank you for this resolution. I really encourage you to vote yes to extend time to review this. It takes great thought and great consideration. I want to clarify too, I'm not here just based on my, what I do professionally. I want to thank AJ. I was homeless as a teenager myself in Spokane for two years, and their voice at the table is of extreme importance and value. So, thank you AJ for speaking on that. I want to, while I'm encouraging everybody to vote yes, I want to draw a point of concern that I have. When touring the Trent location last spring, I, I had the opportunity to be there during the first tours. I was for a short term on the COC Board. I exited it due to realizing I don't know how to do politics, so I had to exit. But at that tour, I pointed out, and others did too, that this is just a warehouse. Now, I'm reading in here that be it further resolved that the City Council reserves the right to condition any approval of a permanent ILA on a detailed plan to relieve the city of the operational and capital expenses associated with TRAC sometime in the year 2024, which is just this coming year. So, it looks like in order to move forward and create something that could be really impactful, it's also being tasked with fixing a massive error. And I think that may be setting us up for failure. So, I just want everybody to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. See, I'm Hallie. Derek, Justice, and I guess on this last name, Dua.
Derek, it's our Logan District. As I said earlier, I'm a private citizen, tax-paying citizen like most everybody in this room, and that includes renters or mortgage, people pay mortgages, all the same, you're gonna pay rent, you're gonna pay your mortgage, you pay taxes. And how those taxes is what you guys use to pay for all the people who come up here repeatedly, usually every meeting, demanding you to do something, demanding you for money. And it goes on and on and on with the criticism of everything each one of you do. I did a little bit of homework, it's kind of brief, but I looked into how many nonprofit organizations are there in Spokane and Spokane Valley? There's 3,196 organizations, nonprofit, in this area. They employ 25,707 people collectively. I'd like you to guess how much money they collectively bring in every year. It's not $4 million, it's $4 billion. Their collective assets are $20 billion. They come in and ask all six of you for money on a constant basis. They criticize everything you do. They criticize just about what everybody says. I think it's probably time that the 3,196 collective organizations that are nonprofit, that don't contribute to the tax dollars to pay for their, all these projects, I think they should form a coalition of their own and create a super fund of their own and come up with their own staff and start joining the rest of you, which are all the people who in the city who pay their taxes and the money you use. I think they should come together and maybe set up a program where if you put up a million dollars, they'll put up a million dollars. I think it's fair. So, the criticism can go both ways instead of only one way. You know, it's only, it's of all matter of fairness. We all know what the problem is. We all would like you to vote the right way, but $4 billion is their collective income of the 3,196 nonprofit, non-taxpaying organizations. You've got the fluoride coming up as a decision. That should go to vote to the public. The people behind that is Delta Dental. They're a nonprofit organization with $7 billion coming in. Most of that money goes to the upper, you know, leaders. Nonprofit organization, no taxes. But they're coming in here with $4 million and asking you to put fluoride in our system. That's a voter's right. That burden shouldn't fall on your shoulders. It's too big a decision.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Justice.
Hello. My name is Justice Farrell, stickler for the rules. Point avoider is also something you can use. There is many ways you can summarize the issues that Spokane citizens face. We have had the highest rent increases in the nation and a serious lack of affordable housing in Spokane. On top of that, corporations continue to make record-breaking profits at the cost of massive, massive inflation for all of us. This is one of the many examples groceries have doubled in price in little over a year. And I want to remind you, half of Spokane are renters. These struggles do have answers, and the best answers don't always line somebody's pockets. We can take the TRAC shelter with Larry Stone purchasing and raising the rent after leasing a new, new building. The shelter, if we can call it a shelter, is more like a warehouse that cost the city 1.5 million to install running water, which it previously didn't have as there was reports of frozen sewage, as well as disgusting smells in the summer heat. This is not a place for hope, and it's a lack of opportunity for the people who are stored there. But instead of finding solutions, we always try to find more opportunities to punish people. Punishments that not only apply to those who cannot find any shelter or accommodations as treatment is paid last. And our police budget that is used to shuffle those without shelter or protection in and out of the system that focuses on the value of someone's continued recidivism than the rehabilitation of people, and whose public channels focus on fear-mongering and dividing the people of Spokane. The Spokane Regional Homeless Authority started as another arm of the intellectual governance that focuses not only on punishment, but the cruelty and dehumanization by forcible detention. With the framework of our city channels, it is no surprise that those who continue to attempt the archaic and cruel solutions that breed trauma, as our mayor, our city channels, our police channels continue to be proud of their fear-mongering and not look at the internal failures of poor housing policies, stagnant wages, and greedy landlords. Now, we have the opportunity to vote yes, to vote for having a greater collective voice so this council and the people of this city may learn that cultivating trauma doesn't fix an issue, but creates further frustration due to the incompetence of repeating the same punitive measures we've practiced for the last hundreds of years. Sweeps cause desperation, criminalizing poverty creates a record, so those that fall may never be able to pick themselves back up. Let's use those educated through experience and the service providers to change the narrative and build slowly, because slowly more and more of us are finding our siblings, children, and parents without shelter and without a way out. People are and remain resilient, so let's work on solutions to continue people, lift people up like this resolution. Let's listen to those impacted and see both preventative and restorative solutions for the greater Spokane population. If you want a safer Spokane, fund services for those struggling and give hope to the children of the city where minimum wage is not enough to cover rent. Or at least give the voices of those impacted and those doing the treatment work to support those who are entering the struggle of homelessness to not explain, not explain, to explain not only the issues and the causes, but the solutions. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And you're gonna have to tell me your name again in the microphone.
It's Dua Rahima. It's the first name. Hunter is the last name, and Dua Rahima means the merciful prayer.
Okay, thank you. And after you, then we have Chris and Christian.
Okay, so thank you for the input. Thank you for taking the input from the community and extending the timeline to get this right. Good evening. My name is Dua Rahima Hunter, resident of Spokane, District Two, and I work for Washington Low Income Housing Alliance, and I am the statewide organizer for Resident Action Project, aka, aka RAP, which is a program of the housing alliance. RAP is a statewide network of people with lived experience of housing injustice, insecurity, and homelessness. I am also a person with these lived experience. I and RAP believe those closest to the problems are closest to the solution, but furthest away from the decision-making tables and the resources, and we say no more. We believe that solutions are best led when we are centering the voice of those with lived experience. To be successful, the Spokane Regional Authority on Homelessness needs to center the people in our community with lived experience. The existing draft charter should be revised to confine the scope of the regional authority to housing and homelessness issues and to limit its interest in public safety and criminal detention. This is a good start. It can go further. As written, the city council has not offered enough comments on the approach of the authority would take towards issue including sweeps, criminalization, the question of funding short-term shelters versus housing, and the support for following best practices such as housing first. Ultimately, I urge you to ensure that the regional authority center its work in solutions around those who have lived experience, and I'm asking you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. And Chris, Christian, and Julie Garcia.
Hi there. I wanted to, first off, I want to thank you all for giving us your time and energy tonight. And I say energy because I know how it's, how late it is to drink a coffee or a five-hour energy tonight. We can't do that right now. Hold for laughter. Okay. My name is Chris Schutt. I am a housing specialist with Revive at the TRAC shelter. I understand that the way TRAC is being run is not ideal at all, but the people who are literally in the back room like me are doing big things to help try ending homelessness. I was homeless with mental health issues. I would do things that would get me arrested, and I did those things because of my mental health flare-up. Every time I was arrested, seriously, every time, I was taken to the hospital to get checked out to see if I was fit for jail. After the third, fourth, fifth time, you would think that I would be able to get help, but I didn't. And that was the old days. That would always land me back on the streets. Lately, there has been significant improver, improvements when it comes to help. I know that all these improvements are based on the help needed in the community and from the people who know about the struggle. There is no offense intended when I say you don't know until you know. And what I mean by that is until you have the experience, you can't truly understand. Just like I don't know the blood, sweat, and tears it takes to be a member of the city council, the late hours, the scrutiny, and so on. Everyone usually only sees how easy it is, ah, excuse me, usually, everyone only sees how easy it looks, but know that we see you, and we hope that you see us as well. Please vote yes, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. And then Christian and Julie and Regina.
Hi, my name is Christian McKinney. I'm with SLIC, working on the Row Project. And I just learned today about the adjusted nature of this resolution. I'm here asking you to vote yes and to thank you for the adjustment. I think it's a good decision to wait and deliberate further, taking more data and input into account. As you know, there are several areas that many of us are eager to have this additional time to see adjusted, and I'll just speak to one of them. I think we need more time to develop the inclusion of experience, as you've heard, in the design and follow-through of the authority. While I personally often work in an office doing work related to homelessness and housing, and that's great, but I've also been on outreach with the peer organizations that are actually working with the people here in Spokane, and it's just a totally different animal. These are the ones that really know the people. I've seen the compassion, the knowledge, the street smarts they have in this regard. They know what's needed, useful, kind, and trauma-informed, and they also have the best access to these folks who are currently experiencing houselessness to help gather and include them, and their incredibly practical perspectives and understanding. I would love to see the providers' experience and the experience of those they serve included both in the design of the authority, but also moving forward as an integral component of decision-making. Not only, this is more of a personal note from me, not only is experience effective, but I think experience keeps our efforts personal and engaged and not numbers-based. The numbers can be compelling. As someone who works on a computer in this regard, I know the joy of seeing someone get housing as a one becomes a zero or something along those lines, and that's an amazing feeling, but it can also make it easy to lose sight of an individual person's stories that are at play here. Imagine a small town where only one person is houseless. They probably wouldn't have a program. They'd have individuals that know that person, who know their story and their situation, and are equipped to help them in a really personally crafted way. And that's not always possible, but I think incorporating experience keeps that vision in mind. The beauty of peer work is that it keeps houselessness an incredibly personal issue. And I think that even when designing a larger authority, we could preserve that spirit of recognizing each individual in whatever ways we can. So, thank you for this adjusted resolution. I would love to see it pass.
Thank you. And Julie, Gina, and Juan.
Good evening, Council. I want to thank Council President Kinnear and Bingle for working with the committee to help adjust this. Our city's in a gigantic crisis, a homeless crisis. It impacts us all, from neighborhoods, their concerns are valid, businesses, their concerns are valid, people experiencing homelessness, their concerns are valid, and experienced people in this field, our voices are valid. We have to do something different than what we're doing now, and a regional homeless authority is the only answer moving forward. If we continue to keep doing things the way that we have done things, we're gonna stay in this exact same situation we're in right now, and that is not enough resources, not enough housing, and an extreme amount of people experiencing homelessness. People are becoming homeless every single day. Elderly is the highest population of people we're seeing becoming homeless on a daily basis. Our elders are sleeping on the streets of our city. It's unacceptable, and we have to do something different. We continue to keep creating a governance board that is the exact same as we have now, will never get anywhere. The experts in the room are the peers. They've been there. They've struggled and are becoming homeless every single day. Elderly is the highest population of people we're seeing becoming homeless on a daily basis. Our elders are sleeping on the streets of our city. It's unacceptable, and we have to do something different. We continue to keep creating a governance board that is the exact same as we have now, will never get anywhere. The experts in the room are the peers. They've been there. They've struggled and clawed their way out, and they're coming back to help the others. There's something to be said about that, and it's how we move forward in homeless services. So I thank you for this resolution. It will move us closer to a place as a community that we need to be, which, if we can help house the chronically homeless, we can make homelessness rare and brief for the rest of the folks that are going to come into that. We'll never solve homelessness. It's going to continue to happen. It has happened forever. We have to be able to have services and resources and expertise in the governance of how we do things. Our plan to address homelessness needs to be regional. We need to all be focusing on the same thing, and in the original agreement, there wasn't one word that said anything about the problem that we have in homeless services. We have no housing. There is none. We need to create it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Regina, Juan, and Jerry.
I just want to say that I hope that you pass this because it's, I'm lived experience. I'm seeing it out there every day, and it's going to get worse. These people just need some guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan, and then Jerry, and then Ken.
Hi. My name is Juan, but everybody calls me Johnny. So I have not only lived experience, but I worked out in the community. I work for Pioneer Human Services Recovery Navigator Program at Spokane. I've also volunteered with Jules Helping Hands before I got into this field for a few years. But, you know, I've seen, when I started volunteering with Jules, I didn't see anybody out there at 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, and I learned a lot by going and volunteering with her. And I seen compassion. I seen like people who really cared, you know, when they're out there in the cold, when it's snowing, and people are freezing. I never really seen any other organization. I'm just going to be straight up her. And that's what inspired me, I guess, to make it, just to turn it to, I worked like 13 years in metal fabrication here, the whole time I lived here, but I was excelling and doing like really good in the metal fabrication world. So, but because of my lived experience of homelessness as a kid and as a teenager, like I lived a rough life. Like I was shot two different times before I was 21. I'm not from here, but like I lived, I was homeless as a kid. Mother being killed, my father, like I grew up nothing. I grew up in the street. I know the street. And when I moved here 13 years ago, it wasn't because of a choice. It was because this is the only place in my jurisdiction when I got out of incarceration. But I'm out there in the street a lot now, and I work at Trac. I work in all the shelters, and I work with housing specialists, employment specialists, and I give back and I use my life and my testimony and where I'm from to hopefully inspire those in the street. You know, I could tell you right now, we don't need to lock people up or criminalize homelessness. We need more shelters because this is the problem I'm seeing out there. We don't have enough homes. We don't have, I have people, clients that we work with that have vouchers, but they don't have renters that will give them a second chance and rent them. We have women who are trying to get into inpatient facilities, but we don't have enough women in patient facilities. We have people who have mental health issues, but we don't have enough beds available for them to get the beds to stabilize, or just, I just run across barrier after barrier, and I try to take a lot of that stress, just like a lot of the providers here. We try to take the stress away from the people who are trying to get help, but we don't have enough. We don't need more jails.
Johnny.
We need more shelters.
Your time's up. Thank you. All right, Jerry, Ken, and then Angel.
Hello, my name is Jerry Rathman. I am the chair of the CHHS Board. Thank you for choosing to reappoint me to the CHHS Board tonight. I have been serving as the chair since the beginning of this year, and I have been a board member for over three years now. I want to start by sharing my sincere appreciation for council member Bingle and council president Kinnear for their leadership on the Spokane Regional Collaborative to get us to where we are tonight with this adjusted resolution. Our board has been closely following the development of this regional authority, and we support the current resolution as it directly addresses our concerns with the proposed PDA. We're very encouraged that through this resolution, the city council has acknowledged the concerns and recommendations of the CHHS Board and the other stakeholder entities, the COC, the Homeless Coalition, Experience Matters. We agree that a regional approach is ideal for addressing homelessness, and I will take a little bit of time tonight to reiterate a few of our key concerns to emphasize the importance of voting yes on this resolution tonight. The original proposed timeline was too accelerated to make good decisions, and certainly not enough time to properly establish a new PDA. Up to 18 months should be given to explore this option. There is also no assessment of what's currently not working and how we fix it, so we have no way to ensure that a new system will not repeat the same ineffective processes. The same goes for the extent of regional collaboration currently taking place. We need to know where we are currently being effective and in what ways we could do better. Ultimately, there needs to be a cost-benefit analysis of improving on our current system versus building a new system. This needs to be information that is transparent, and stakeholders, service providers, those doing the work, and those with lived experience need to be part of this planning. The CHHS Board is concerned with the ill-defined use of detention in the proposed PDA plan. Detention should not be included in the plan. Criminalization of homelessness does not solve the root causes of homelessness. It is not the right support or the right tool for addressing homelessness. The CHHS Board believes a planning period needs to happen, and it is important, but the CHHS department has to keep moving forward while this planning is happening so we can meet the current community needs, like the cold season that's upcoming, that the city has an obligation to address. Jen Saracides and her staff are doing good work, and they need to be supported to keep moving forward. Otherwise, we put CHHS funding at risk if we don't meet our expenditure and reporting requirements. Staff and service providers are preparing for proposals and reviews this fall for $16.3 million in funding from home, home ARP, CDBG, and HHOS funding programs. We have to support the CHHS staff and our community in executing these contracts for these important services. Please vote tonight yes for this adjusted proposal or the adjusted resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ken, and then Angel.
Thank you, council member. My name is Kenny Crery, and a little bit of background about myself. I moved up here to Spokane six years ago and became a taxpayer and a citizen of Spokane. I came up here as a construction worker, and two years into my construction work, I discovered homeless services. I started volunteering, making sandwiches, and passing them out on holidays, and I just noticed the amount of homelessness we have up here in Spokane. I love this city. I love this city with all my heart. I'm not going anywhere. But I'm here to implore you to vote yes on this, and not only vote yes, but to vote in to live experience as part of the group, making the decisions. I, 10 years ago, I was homeless. I'm out there, and right now, for the last four years, I'm out there every day making friends with our homeless population. I do outreach for Jules Helping Hands. I'm also director of operations, and so I'm hands-on experience, you know, almost every day of the week out there. Experience matters. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening, city council. My name's Angel Tommy O'Sam. I am born and raised here on the unceded lands of the Spokane tribe, and I am a citizen of the Colville tribe. I am Insel Shin. I am currently the director of programs for Yo-Yo Spokni. We do bring prevention, awareness, and postvention services, wraparound services for folks who are vulnerable to becoming missing or murdered in our region. Previous to my time with Yo-Yo Spokni, I've worked with compassionate addiction treatment. I've also been a bail disruptor for the bail project. I've also been able to provide peer services as a parent ally for the Parents for Parents program, and that's helping folks who are navigating the child welfare system in our region, Region 1. I am here to ask council members to please vote yes tonight on the new resolution for the regional homeless authority. I am here not only as a provider now, but as somebody with what you've heard over and over, lived experience. I am foremost a person in recovery, recovery from substance use disorder, also homelessness, incarceration, mental health illness. So in my time in recovery, I've really decided that I need to be of service, which supports my recovery, and it has kind of found me here, helping people in different issues here in our city. I am really grateful for the revisions to this proposal and support it wholeheartedly, not only as a person with lived experience who's been on the other side of being a provider, but as an indigenous person in this city, in this community, because it is community that has been able to keep indigenous people from homelessness. I've heard over and over tonight that homelessness has always existed, but not here. Back before colonization, there was not homelessness, and if there was, people suffering from physical, emotional, mental health illnesses or afflictions, the whole community gathered around them and nurtured them and cultivated ways and means to take care of every single person. I know that in my own experience.
Angel, Angel.
Oh, time's up. Okay, just please vote yes. Thank you.
All right. Council commentary. Go ahead.
Well, I have to speak first because my heart is about ready to explode. So let me get this out. I want to thank everybody who is here tonight, including my fellow council members. On the council side, we have worked so hard, and we have had so many discussions about this issue. Council member Bingle and council member Kinnear have attended the meetings, have been very forthcoming with concerns. We've all shared our concerns, and this really is a product of a lot of conversations. I want to thank everybody out here tonight because something occurred to me that is so important that we should all be so proud of. This is the first time that I think, as a community, we've been able to have this conversation. It's been honest. Some of it's been painful. It's been compassionate, but you know what? It hasn't been political. And I am so pleased that we've been able to kind of cross over that, that this isn't a political issue. This is a human issue. It's a problem that we all experience every day, whether you've had it in your family, whether you see it every day, and any one of us could be people living on the street. So I just am so proud and so happy that we've had the conversation. I'm so happy that we had a original resolution to build on, that we were able to listen to providers, and thank you to all the providers. I've been on council a long time. I've been with the city a long time, and you know, when something happens and when worse goes to worse, we always call on you, and we're constantly calling on our providers to assist and to help, and it's time that we listen, and we listen to the people that have had lived experience, that we listen to the people of other cultures. We can do this, but we have to do it together, and I just want to thank you all. I am so proud tonight, and I'm glad that we're to this point, and thank you to council members for attending those meetings and for supporting this and listening to the most important people in the room, and that's all of you tonight, and I am so glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Bingle.
Yes, thank you. I will, I've got a number of things to say here. I just want to talk about, as the person who's been there from the beginning, from the first meeting until the last meeting that we've had and will continue in all these meetings, I'm trying hard to not be offended by some things that are coming out, and I think some things have been said about this group and this organization, which has been a very bipartisan, intentionally bipartisan group, who's reached out to lots and lots of people throughout this. But I hear a lot of people saying that we need to listen to the experts, and I totally get it. I get where everybody's coming from. About half the people that are sitting in that room and discussing this situation have personally visited, you know, Ground Zero for Reducing Homelessness in the United States, Houston. We've all gone to learn. We have engaged their folks. We have hired their experts to come in and help inform our process as we're going through. This is not something that we're creating, you know, willy-nilly. This is something where we very much are listening to the experts. When we're talking about let's take our time, we want to make sure we take our time. I promise you, we are not moving fast in this thing at all. We have spent six months so far working on this, and we have not come anywhere near an agreement because there are so many issues with such a complex problem. And so there's a lot of negotiation still to happen between all the different jurisdictions. If we truly want to go from collaboration to integration, which is exactly where we want to be, there's a lot of time that's going to be taken here. When it talks about, you know, I've heard a lot that we haven't engaged people. I again want to speak on behalf of specifically the three facilitators bringing this in. I know that they've reached out to a lot of different organizations. They continue to listen to do that, and we continue to hear from people from all over the spectrum because, again, we understand that if we're going to have a regional collaboration on this topic, it's going to require buy-in from everybody of all different political walks of life, socioeconomic status, all of that. It's going to require everybody to buy in, so it's going to require a lot of middle ground. We continue to listen to everybody as they bring us their concerns. We, the original resolution wasn't like, here's the organization, here's what's going to happen, let's go, it's created. It was just, we're going to continue working on this through October 15th, and then there was probably going to be another resolution that came afterward because we wouldn't have reached an agreement by October 15th either, in my opinion. And again, as we're going through, I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of the elements in this resolution, and I understand that if I weren't on leave taking care of my beautiful babies, that I probably would have been able to be more engaged in this conversation. And so I understand why the council is taking this position. But again, this isn't something where we are making any decisions. My biggest concern with this new resolution versus the other one is that when you're talking about something that is so delicate, because this issue is so delicate, there's not a lot of trust between a lot of different people on this. And with that delicacy, whereas we've asked the county, the valley, Medical Lake, Liberty Lake, all these other jurisdictions to sign this resolution, and then the city of Spokane decided, you know, we're not going to sign the same one that the county has already signed, we're going to sign a different one. I don't think that's a sign of good faith. I don't think it's a sign of unity. I don't think it's a sign of collaboration, and I worry that by stepping out and doing our own thing, we are jeopardizing this entire situation, considering the city of Spokane is desperately looking for partners throughout the county, for the valley to join us, for the county to join us, and they're the most hesitant to do so, and for us to ask them to do something and then for And for us to ask them to do something and then for us to not do it, I think that we've seriously jeopardized this situation moving forward. And I don't know that there's going to be any salvaging, but I could be wrong with that. But I truly think this is something that hurt our efforts moving forward. Even though I believe the intentions of this resolution were sincere, I think it's really hurt us. And so I won't be supporting it tonight because again, I think it's a show of bad faith to the purpose of the act. Sign something else.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. I really think this is just kind of the beginning or I guess the continuation of the negotiation. And at the end of the day, and Councilmember Bingle, I think, hit it right on the nose. At the end of the day, if this is going to work and it's going to come together, it really is going to be something that the city of the valley, city of Liberty Lake, city of Aerie Heights, and the unincorporated county can all agree on. And so I would actually encourage them. I think it might be helpful, frankly, from my perspective, if they would do the same thing that we're doing with the things they believe should be a part of this regional authority as well. And let's continue that public discussion because I think this is actually helping to guide the discussion and guide the negotiation. And I will be supporting this tonight. I agree with much of what's in it. Probably not everything, but much of what's there. And I think that it makes sense for us to have some guardrails on this discussion going forward. And at the end of the day, something different might come out of this authority discussion. And this council will have to decide if that's something that this council wants to sign up for. But it's also probably going to be a different council. And it'll likely happen sometime in '24, if it happens. And so that'll be a conversation for that point in time. But in the meantime, I think that this resolution is helpful to help guide the discussion, kind of mold things in a direction that this council thinks we should go, taking things in a thoughtful, kind of slower way than perhaps has been at least articulated. And I agree with Councilman Bingle. I mean, I don't think things are moving that fast. It's kind of perceived like it is, but it really isn't. And so I think this is the right way to go. And the last thing I just want to add, well, actually, there's one more piece too. And I will be bringing an ordinance forward in the next few weeks on data disclosure. It's pretty technical in nature, and so I did not want to rush that at all. But really, a holistic approach to what are the rules around when and how we share data and what that looks like. But the last thing I just wanted to say was, Councilman Bingle has worked on this for the last six months, along with the former council president and our current council president. And they put in a lot of time and a lot of effort and a ton of leadership. And I just, on Councilmember Bingle's behalf, I mean, he has called valley council members, county commissioners, I think folks in other jurisdictions, trying to keep them at the table. There have been multiple times where people have wanted to walk away from these discussions. And he has been there, trying to keep them at the table. And so I certainly can understand his frustration tonight, feeling like maybe this is going to take things sideways. I hope it won't. I don't think it will. I disagree on that. But I do think that probably a really good way to move forward would be for the valley, the county, Liberty Lake, Aerie Heights to do something similar. So I'll leave it there.
Okay. So before we go back to Councilmember Bingle, do either of you want to comment?
Oh, I'll just be brief and thank you. And I will also thank everyone that showed up tonight to testify, and especially to the ones who shared your personal experience and your lived experience on the streets. I could hear that pain. I'm in support of this, but I am truly proud to see so many of our providers here tonight. And I know that other municipalities need to come along. But the majority of the providers are in Spokane, so we have to build trust with you first. As a provider myself, in the mental health field, I know that when you're in the front line, what people right at the top in policy does not always translate to implementation on the streets. And so therefore, you really need people on the front line to make sense of what the law is being written and how that affects the people we're trying to help. I'm in support of this. Again, thank you to providers and the lived experience. It will be challenging. I think we can get there. We know we need to get there. So I think if we're keeping the end goal in sight, we'll continue to move forward.
Yeah, I'll just say thank you again to everyone who came and testified and showed us how important this is to you and to know that we are listening to you. We appreciate that. I think this is important to say that we're still committed to the concept. This doesn't mean that we're just stalling to prevent it from happening. But there's still a commitment to the idea of Regional Homeless Authority. And at that one presentation that we saw at the convention center, said it's really up to the municipalities and the county to decide, you know, what's that going to look like in the negotiations? And I think, like Councilmember Cathcart said, this is part of it. This is saying this is the idea that we would like. Doesn't mean it's going to exactly look like how we're saying right now either. It's going to be our position right now. We're going to have to continue to have that conversation. And so it's going to be a thorough conversation, but I'm still committed to it.
Councilmember Bingle.
Thank you. Lastly, wanted to address some other things as we're talking about the most important thing to do, listen to people with lived experience and the subject matter experts. And every single one of us in these discussions understand that if we want to overcome the politics, because you can't put the politics aside, you can't politicize positions. You can only overcome the politics. And with that being said, when you look at the proposed board makeup, which I have issues with, and you know, those are things that we're still negotiating through. But there are five elected members on there, and there are eight subject matter experts in there. And of the eight subject matter experts, two come from housing because I agree, this is largely a housing issue, right? And so we need housing experts at the table. We have a public housing expert and a private housing expert because they are serving two different causes, both incredibly important. You have two medical representatives on here, physical and behavioral health on this. You have a seat for lived experience, specifically for lived experience. Then there is a business, a philanthropy, and a public safety as well. But this is not something that we are not listening to people who are the experts. It's not as if we're not listening to people with lived experience. Heck, one of the most important people in this conversation, our very own Nicolette Offletree, is somebody who's an expert in this and somebody who has lived experience. She's also a person who traveled with us to Houston to learn. And she took incredible notes. And she's bringing that back to make sure that we are doing as much as we can to mold that as much as we can with its own Spokane flavor because it is different in Texas versus in Washington. And so when I hear people saying that we need to listen to the experts, I very much believe that that is a driving force of every single one of ours, is that we are listening to the experts and to people with lived experience. And so I would encourage people who are here to, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to my office. I'll be back in the office starting next week more regularly. To my wife, Sugar, but I love her dearly and I know she's going to be okay. But reach out to my office because a lot of questions that people have are questions that we absolutely are discussing. And I would love to let you in on the conversation. We'd love to come to you. We'd love to hear from you because that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not going to say too much because everything's been said tonight. I will thank you all for coming because I think it's important we hear from you. We've heard a lot of different perspectives. I think that's important. And we really are listening. We're not up here just zoning out. We're listening because you offer a lot of expertise that we don't have. So thank you all for coming. With that, prepare to vote. And.
No.
No. All right. Thank you. All right, now, council, we've got one, two, three, four, five ordinances relating to utilities. Do you want to take them all at once? Sadie, do you want to take them all at once? Okay, that's a yes. All right. So Ms. Frontworth, do you want to read them all?
Ordinance C.36424 relating to the rates of the Water and Hydroelectric Department, amending SMC sections 13.04.2002, 13.04.2005, 13.04.2014, 13.04.2015, 13.04.2016, and 13.04.20161 to Chapter 13.04 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C.36425 relating to the rates for water, wastewater capital rates, amending SMC Section 13.035.500 to Chapter 13.035 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance 36426 relating to the rates of wastewater in sewer public utilities and services, amending SMC Sections 13.03.1004, to Chapter 13.03 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance 36427 relating to the rates of solid waste disposal public utilities and services, amending SMC Sections 13.02.0560, 13.02.0562, 13.02.0563, and 13.02.0568 to Chapter 13.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance 36428 relating to the rates of solid waste collection public utilities and services, amending SMC Sections 13.02.0336, 13.02.0502, 13.02.0504, 13.02.0506, 13.02.0508, 13.02.0510, 13.02.0514, and 13.02.0554 to Chapter 13.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance 36429 relating to updates to the sewer use ordinances, adding new SMC Sections 13.03.0101, 13.03.0216, 13.03.0217, 13.03.0218, 13.03.0220, 13.03.0221, 13.02.0222, 13.03.0223, and 13.03.0503 and amending SMC Sections 13.03.0502, 13.03.0602, 13.03.0622, 13.03.0628, and 13.03.1216 to Chapter 13.03 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. As substituted on August 21st, 2023.
Okay, thank you. We have two people signed up for testimony. Dennis and Will.
Thank you, City Council. Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. 10% fee increase is significant for the refuse. I mean, I've never, ever received a 10% pay increase year over year. And reading through the bill, I'm just like, oh, am I the only one that finds it ridiculous that the garbage we take to the plant ourselves? There's a self-haul transaction fee and a minimum charge per vehicle. Why is there a minimum? Shouldn't it just be based on your tonnage? And why charge an extra self-haul fee for the garbage you bring with you, which you're already spending gas and time on? And I'll repeat what you've already heard me talk about two times, if you recall. Why are our waste collection bills now, why are our waste collection bills not being reduced since we cut in half the collection of recycling? And again, I'll repeat again for the second, well, this will be the third time. When I called Waste Management to talk about it, when I could expect my bill reduced for the reduced services, not only did they tell me my bill wouldn't be reduced, additional conversation with that person led to my understanding that actually very little of what we put in the recycling bins is recycled, but a rather large portion of it, maybe a majority, is burned. So can we please just have an adult conversation and talk about eliminating curbside recycling completely and educate the public on what recycling is desirable and how to self-collect and drop off? This would save the city money, would save us money, and more importantly, would make us look less foolish. And then as noted by another commentator on the phone last week, why are the sizes of the refuse containers being reduced? Are we planning to actually replace everything with smaller containers? And I noticed that the 20-gallon can is being eliminated, which seems weird. Thank you.
Thank you. Will.
Good evening again. My name is Will Huelings. I live downtown. I'm just, I'm not sure what she signed me up for, but I was going to speak on this, Ordinance C.36424. It's about the rates for Water and Hydroelectric Department. Well, one way we could save probably some money and maybe, and I harped on this last week, but as I left City Council chambers and walked out front, the Water Department had a Ford Mach-E fully electric vehicle. Now, these vehicles are expensive and obviously, you know, you guys had to redo all the wording, so now our Police Department can get combustion engines. But when I walked out there, I seen this Water Department. So the next day, I called the supervisor for the Water Department. And he was very polite and he answered a lot of my questions. But I asked him, why are you guys driving around Ford Maches? And he told me he didn't know why either. He's trying, you know, but he's basically because you guys in the state, they want everybody to drive these electric vehicles. He's like, I can't even put a jackhammer in back of this Mach-E. He's like, we got Teslas. We can't even chart. Well, he said the Water Department, they're able to charge them because I guess they, I don't know, they have some kind of charging system set up. But, so my thing is, is maybe cutting back on spending needlessly on stuff like Ford Maches and Teslas and little things like that. And maybe we could save some money that way, too. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council commentary. Go ahead.
Yeah. So first, I want to just point out that the Water side, the rates are not increasing, and that's really good. Particularly while we're continuing to debate the GFCs and some of the infrastructure costs, I think it's important that we sort of keep this flat and have a larger discussion on it in the next cycle. And so that's what's being proposed here, so I appreciate that. Wouldn't be supportive of increasing water rates at this time anyway. But on the refuse side, I don't love the increase. In fact, it frustrates me. But that being said, I do understand the inflationary pressures that are affecting the waste energy, all of the costs for picking up the refuse and destroying it. Obviously, there are recycling costs that are pretty significant. And the reason that, you know, costs obviously didn't go down is because that was a service that was being provided for free when it really should have been charged for at that time. And so that's why cutting it in half, in my opinion, the costs don't go down. But I think, you know, one of the things that I would just want to point out is that when we, two years ago, I think it was, when that self-haul fee was brought forward, the $2 fee, I voted for it. And the reason was that one of the purposes behind it was to help fund neighborhood cleanups. And we have some pretty big issues in our neighborhoods, particularly in my district, but all across the city, we have some pretty big issues in neighborhoods that need to be cleaned up. And that is a huge public service and a benefit to constituents across the city. And so I'm working right now with Chris and with Marlene on another ordinance that I'll be bringing forward in a couple of weeks, just to make it clear that a portion of that self-haul fee is to go towards neighborhood cleanups and just to make sure that there's no doubt in the minds of the public. I think that that is a really important service, something that we have to do far better on. And I know our neighbors are really, really wanting to see that. And so I will be supporting these tonight. Again, don't love the increases, but I do understand them.
And I would just add that Marlene is here if you all have questions.
I'm just going to ask a question.
Okay. Marlene, do we? Can you put your microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Marlene, do you have employees in the utility department driving Teslas?
I don't have Teslas. We, I don't know if we actually received the Ford F-150 Lightnings. We do have some on order and we've had them on order. The orders have been canceled multiple times in our effort to try to comply with the EV vehicle requirements statewide and locally. So we do have, it's possible we've gotten one, but mostly the orders have been canceled. So. So just because of the, there's the backlog on those orders, but we are trying to get some to be in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other council commentary? Okay, prepare to vote. Oh, Councilmember Bingle, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I think Marlene has called it the spirit of the 2.9 plan, these ordinances that we're doing. Had your water rates, had we approved an increase in water rates of the 2.9%, that's roughly the amount, had we done 2.9% on water and wastewater and also the garbage, but transferred it, that increase, that same increase that you would have incurred on your bill, all to the, to the garbage side, because that's where we've seen increases in costs exponentially. And so this right here is roughly the usual amount that your bill would have normally gone up every year. And so while, yes, it is 10% on the, on the garbage side, it's roughly what you would have expected your bill to increase, so.
Okay, thank you. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Great. And then we have, we put on the 2023 0076. Do you want to read that?
Yes. A resolution to reduce the city excess liability coverage from the current limit of $20 million to $10 million, whereas the City of Spokane annually secures insurance coverage for its activities, including commercial general liability, auto liability, and law enforcement liability. And whereas historically, the city has secured excess liability coverage of up to $20 million per occurrence. And whereas, in review of the 10-year loss record, the city has not experienced a liability claim that has exceeded $5 million, and coverage in excess of $10 million per occurrence is therefore both unnecessary and more expensive. And whereas, it has been recommended the city reduce the excess coverage limits to $10 million, which would affect commercial general liability, auto liability, and law enforcement liability coverages. And whereas, the total savings to the city by reducing the excess coverage limits will be $876,983 in 2024, as evidenced by the attached summary of premium costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spokane City Council authorizes the Department of Risk Management to reduce the excess liability coverage from $20 million to $10 million for the renewal of all city excess liability insurance policies, effective on September 1st, 2023.
Thank you. We have one person signed up, and that is Dennis Flynn.
I'm good.
I'm sorry?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Any council commentary?
I'll just say quickly, our new risk manager, Scott Jordan, said he was going to come in and look at the policies that we have and look at where we could have significant savings without putting ourselves in additional risk. This was one that he found, $800,000 plus is a significant amount of money in our budget crunch this year, so I just want to thank him for really doing that due diligence going forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes. So, right, and then our last item is a hearing.
H.1, Hearing on Interim Zoning Ordinance C.36405 passed by City Council on July 17th, 2023, concerning parking regulations for housing exempting minimum parking space requirements for certain residential developments, adopting a new Chapter 17(c)(405) of the Spokane Municipal Code, interim parking regulations for housing, setting a public hearing, and establishing a work program.
We have two people signed up, Dennis and Darren.
Thank you for clarifying that fee. I support that, though it should be on everybody's bill, not just the people who go out there. Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. I just want the citizens who are here and listening now and maybe listening later to be informed that this is eliminating off-street parking requirements basically across the entire city, I mean, a half mile on either side of a bus route. The council says that most neighborhoods are already developed, so this won't impact you. Well, drive near our own university district or Seattle or Portland residential areas, or I have kids at Montana State and University of Montana, so drive in Bozeman and Missoula and see what no off-street parking requirements will mean to you. Sure, you might have a driveway, but that neighbor of yours for decades, well, he just might decide to sell, and the buyer might decide to turn that house into a sixplex, incorporating the garage, which is something that's also been approved by this council in adherence with state law, admittedly, that duplexes, quads, and sixplexes are allowed in residential single-family zones. And now there's going to be no off-street parking requirement. And additionally, an accessory dwelling unit could take over the driveway. So those seven households, if you have a sixplex with an ADU, and I might be wrong on that, it'd be in a possibility, but let's say a sixplex, that'll have what, at least five, maybe 10, maybe 14 vehicles that need to park somewhere? So guess who's going to be parked on the street outside your house? It's not going to be your friends and visiting family, because they'll have to park somewhere else and walk in. So instead of pushing our state to rescind the Confiscatory Growth Management Act, which I would encourage that council of Washington states to do, it seems like it'll be probably long enough before it affects me and you to complain about it, and these seats will long have been replaced with other people. So it just seems like short-sighted leadership.
And Darren.
Thank you for this. Darren Watkins, Spokane Realtors. I want to thank you, Mr. Sapon and Mr. Bingle, for working on this. Every little piece that we do adds to more opportunities for housing. As it comes to parking, I should, I should share with you, there's a lot of data that shows that the parking need for people under the age of 35, of which I'm not, but people under the age of 35 are using far less parking than before. They're preferring to live in the city so they can use more alternative methods of transportation. And so this ordinance fits right in line with the state plan for some very good reasons. And I thought it was very insightful that the two councillors came together to make this happen. And I just want to say thank you in advance for this.
Thank you. Any council commentary?
I think I have a motion to accept the findings.
Yes, but we still have a
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to call on Councilmember Bingle.
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank Councilmember Sapon for partnering on this one, relating to our previous topic of homelessness and the efforts that we're putting in on this, as recognized by most people in here. Housing is a huge part of that, and making sure that we can build as much housing as quickly as possible in the City of Spokane is essential to us, both keeping Spokane an affordable place for families to live, to where our children aren't wanting to leave Spokane or having to leave Spokane to go somewhere else to find a cheaper place to live. I have three, three and under, and I want them to want to live in the city of Spokane and be able to afford to live in the city of Spokane. And this is at the forefront of my mind. I had something else that was also going to be really important there, but it skipped my mind as, again, I looked over and saw my baby there, and she smiled at me, and it took everything else away. So anyway, appreciate that Councilmember Sapon partnering with me on this. And, oh, here it was. This was for, forget it, because I hear what you're saying. This is a temporary ordinance, and we are, we can revisit this again. And I very much have the intent to, if it's not working, then we can always come back and revisit this, which will be part of our process moving forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right.
Yeah, I appreciate working with Councilmember Bingle on this and the rest of council's support on this interim, and we'll be looking forward to this in about a year, or a year of July. But I move that the council adopt the findings set forth in ordinance C.36405 adopted by the council on July 17th and ratify the passage of the interim ordinance.
One second.
Thank you. And this is a voice vote, so I'll in favor indicate saying aye.
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 All right, good. It passes unanimously.
Nay.
Nay.
Oh, sorry. I thought, I heard you say aye.
No.
Okay. So it does not pass unanimously. It is a, one, two, three, four, so it does pass. So thank you all, and we are at the end of our agenda. We do not have a meeting next week. It is Labor Day, so our next meeting will be held September 11th. We are adjourned.